I'm here.
Councilmember Barry. Councilmember Clay. Councilmember Robinson. Councilmember Siemens. Councilmember Sniper. Councilmember Wright.
Here.
Okay, first I'll point out the obvious that we're -- our ranks are a little bit thinner up here tonight. This is the -- this is all of us there are going to be. We have three councilmembers who will not be here this evening. All of them not of their own volition. Councilmember Clay was out of town on business and is on an airplane coming back and couldn't get anything earlier, so she will probably arrive back in town before the end of the meeting, but not much before. Councilmember Barry got called out of town on business this morning. He's in Los Angeles. And Councilmember Sniper, while riding his bicycle home from work on Friday, was hit by a car and has been in the hospital. He was due to come home possibly today. He has a broken shoulder and possibly some broken ribs and is very sore. So if he did make it home tonight, there was the thought that he might be watching this, so if he is, I hope he's home and watching and feeling better. And we'll know more about his condition later this week. And we will be, hopefully, back at close to full strength by our Thursday evening budget work session. So does any councilmember have any comments they'd like to make? Councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. As I have been going through the budget material, the budget itself and budget material, it has occurred to me that maybe some discussion that the council might consider during -- early in the budget process is a discussion of special things that each of us would like to see for the budget this year. I know that I'm particularly interested in -- I'm sure everyone is, in finding ways that we can save money and keep our tax rate or any tax increase to a minimum. But I thought rather than just going through each of the departments in order as we've done in the past, it might be helpful for a brief session to -- for each of us to talk about kind of our personal strategies for the budget this year. And I was just -- I wanted to make a request to the mayor that maybe we could add that to an agenda in one of our next sessions. Thank you.
Councilmember Wright, did you have anything?
Yes, a couple of things. First is I wanted to ask the city manager to look into changing the timing, how long you can stay at the meters in Old Town right now, or at least creating some variety so we have some meters that have greater length of time. Right now, I think they're all 30 minutes, particularly in the Laurel Avenue section. And a number of the business owners there, particularly because the lot behind is now undergoing some construction and has some fewer parking spaces, are finding that it's affecting business traffic because there's only 30-minute time. So if someone's coming there to get something to eat and shop and do something at the post office, 30 minutes doesn't seem like quite enough time. So I realize, you know, the idea around 30 minutes is to have a significant turnover of spaces, but probably just if someone wanted to stay longer, they'd have the inconvenience of having to feed the meter. So I think we might consider looking at maybe doing all of them for longer, an hour, or maybe we do half the street for, you know, one side of the street for a longer period and the other side for a shorter period. I'm not sure where to go into that. I think you're also going to hear that from representatives from OTBA, the people who represent the business interests in the area. The second thing where I wanted to make a request, if we could do a leaf cleanup along Philadelphia from the entrance to the library to Holly, you know, where we have the fence, the picket fence or rail fence with the mesh along it. Leaves have just gathered up there quite heavily, and they're not going to blow away into the street or something like that because of the mesh. We definitely need to have Public Works clean that off. I know it's the state highway, but I think the sidewalk is probably ours. Is that correct? Yeah, so anyway, if we can look at either getting state highway to clean that up or clean it up ourselves. Then the last thing I wanted to just check in on is if you know if state highway's still planning on doing the improvements to Philadelphia and Chicago. I think their target date was May, but I wanted to check in on that.
Yeah, as far as we know, that it's still on schedule for May, but I will ask the planning department if they could touch base with S.H.A. and make sure that's still the case.
Yeah. And then the last item is connected to something that Councilmember Siemens mentioned about having an opportunity for us to each put out individual or specific things that we think should be in the budget. I didn't know that process, you know, there wasn't -- there isn't a specific aspect to that happening in the process now, so there's one thing that I have been thinking about since Public Works is the first -- is this evening. And that's to increase the amount of wind power we purchase beyond what the city manager proposed, which is 50 percent. I would encourage us to go to 100 percent wind power as a city. And it'd be good in the next couple of weeks if we could understand what the financial implications of --
Sure.
I know last year you gave us sort of every 10 percent. I can't remember what it was. I think it might have been 7,500 or 8,000. But I also wonder if the differential has changed because I know, at least in the consumer market, Councilmember Sniper has mentioned this, and I know Councilmember Robinson has also mentioned it to me recently, that it seems that now some of the electrical wind providers, like Washington Gas Electrical Services, are showing that actually it's less expensive based on what Pepco's new rate's going to be. So I wonder if we might prod the county to understand what our -- I know we buy collectively with them, correct? What the differential will be, and it may be smaller or nonexistent in the near future. So and then that also has benefit, which is something Nuclear Free Committee has brought forward to us is what right now, if we don't purchase wind, we're purchasing some Pepco energy that has nuclear power in it, and there's a definite connection between the nuclear power industry and the nuclear weapons industry. So for that reason, I would also encourage us to go to 100 percent.
Councilmember Robinson?
I'll just do a quick follow-up on some councilmember Wright's comments about energy services and ask a question about the municipalization. I think that was what it was called, effort that went on here about, maybe it was 10 years ago, somewhere between five and 10 years ago, about our providing our energy, buying it wholesale and then providing that energy to our constituents. And I think that there's some state obstacles. I remember that when it came up before, there was a committee who looked into it quite deeply, and they said that the -- what was it? The Public Service Commission was also an obstacle, but I wonder if things have changed there, and I wonder if we can look into that to some degree.
Okay. And I just have one quick item. I see that we got some correspondence from the Arbor Day Foundation and that the city has gotten the Tree City USA status again, and they say that it's our 25th year. So congratulations to us on that. Next item is additional agenda items, and there are none, and agenda scheduling update. My only update is budget, budget, budget. So we'll move on to -- for the record, and I just have two proclamations that I want to note. The first one is declaring April 24th to 30th Tacoma Park Veg Week 2009. And there are a number of city businesses who are participating and who are supporting that, including Middle East Cuisine, Tacoma Park Silver Spring Food Co-op, Falafel Stand, Mark's Kitchen, and the Tacoma Business Center. And in proclaiming this, I want to encourage residents to participate. And some of the ideas are choosing vegetarian foods as a way to help protect the planet, their health, and animals, and to explore a wide variety of vegetarian cuisine offered in the community. And this also extends our appreciation to those in the community who have been working on it, including Senator Jamie Raskin and Compassion Over Killing. And the second proclamation is declaring Play Day in the city of Tacoma Park, which is September 26th of this year. And that urges all residents to celebrate Play Day and support and maintain play spaces and playgrounds in our community for the well-being of this and future generations of children. And that is part of an effort to apply for some grant funding for some play equipment and also to participate in this national program. And that effort is being put together, and we need to do this to further that, so that's why it's so far in advance. So I'll just note those two. And we've now reached public comment. For anybody who'd like to make any comments, please address the council and identify yourself, and please keep your comments to three minutes. And that's on any item, anything that's not a special session voting agenda item for tonight, anything on those items, please wait until a chance to comment on those.
Surprise! Okay, I'm Kaye Daniels-Cohen, 19 Sherman Avenue, and I'm again wearing three hats, acting president of SS Carroll Neighborhood Association, a member of the Swimming Pool Advisory Committee, marketing and publicity, and also a member of the Recreation Committee. And I think that the city clerk has passed out the memo that I sent -- that I put together, and we're just going to go over it with you all. As everyone's aware, it's been a challenging, unique experience, not only to get Piny Branch Swimming Pool open, but reopened, but also to market it to the community, especially after a seven-year marketing hiatus. We did it, and it's truly an exercise in "we, the people," because the people, and a lot of them were little people, youngsters, actually, who took a stand to cause it to happen. We're very fortunate, again, to have a facility within our grasp, as well as be in partnership with the Adventist Community Services. But as you're probably also aware, we've been challenged again this year from a budgetary standpoint to continue to have the pool open in the year 2009, 2010. This pool's a wonderful treasure, a great gift to the community, with over 400 swimmers per week utilizing it during community swim hours. Again, these are my requests of the city council and the mayor. One, everyone, and I guess councilmembers Sniper, Barry, and Clay members will get this memo, but to send out an email to all of your wards telling them about the pool and just tell them about the current hours, and note that we've added four to seven on Fridays. So that's an additional four hours that we didn't have in the past. And also, I did give you the small flyer, saving a tree with the hours and also the -- designed by Mr. Terry Siemens. I just better note that. But the times and the costs of the --
Not the pictures, though?
Not the pictures, but he's the one who actually produced the flyer. He didn't produce the picture. That was one of our recreation people. But more important than that, I mean, that's important, is the ward swim. Invite your ward. Choose a Sunday. I mean, it's going to start getting warm, so a swim on Sunday would be great. Choose a Sunday and invite them down. We can help you put that together. We can maybe even have a cookout, you know? And I don't know, is this an election year, this 2009?
Yes, it is.
It is, that's what I thought, because I was going to say if it's not, it's going to be next year. So it's a chance to meet -- oh, am I done? I'm not going to be done. There's only -- there's only two.
That probably just means you're done with that particular topic.
I'm done with that one.
But if you can wrap it up.
Would also, I mean, we'd like to plan a swim with the mayor, you know, for a Sunday if the mayor would agree to it, and that could include the city council, the city clerk, the city manager, Public Works. I mean, we can go on and on with that. So that's something that might get the folks in the pool. And again, my request to city manager Barbara Matthews, and I apologize, I got the double T down here, but I missed it at the top. I apologize. But it is to keep the pool information in the Status and Information Report. In the wonderful world of marketing, or marketeering as I call it, it takes at least five written hits, and that's just written hits. That's not verbal hits or other kinds of, you know, seeing swimming pool open kinds of signs to get someone's attention. And again, I thank you for -- we can -- well, we can use all the help we can get with money and just getting our -- getting the folks in Tacoma Park into the pool, so we have a great leg to stand on if and when we get a chance to see the city council or the county council. And I appreciate your efforts as our elected officials. You're the best. Easy questions, congressman member or councilmember Wright, easy questions.
I'm just wondering when we're going to know what the summer hours are, because it would be good to publicize those ahead of time.
There will be no summer hours. This pool will be closing on June 30th. And what happens is that the funds have been allocated to, and I think I may leave this over to Susan's discussion, but they're allocated to Long Branch Outdoor Pool. This is only -- only was given funding from September, actually, through June from the county council. And that'll probably be the case next year unless we can really, you know, really earn enough money to keep it running during the summer.
I would like to accept your challenge to, for each of the councilmembers to have a kind of a ward party.
Okay.
And work with you to schedule one for Ward Four in early May.
Okay. Early May is soon, buddy, sir.
It doesn't take us long to move in Ward Four.
Okay, all right, all right.
Okay, okay, I'll schedule for one.
Come on. Okay, Ward Three, come on.
Now, Kaye, I have a question. Do kids use that pool in the daytime from Piny Branch Elementary Schools?
Absolutely. That also is -- it may be covered by another speaker tonight.
I see.
You're not going to -- you're not going to -- yes. Yep, Susan.
And do we -- does the county or the school system note that, that their kids are using that asset?
We're hoping. I believe it's been in the information. It's about, what, 450 fourth-grade students?
All the --
Third through fifth. Third through fifth. Susan's going to cover that in her talks. But there's also, I mean, there's a lot, not just -- this is just the community swimming, the 400 people that are also -- folks that are also there in classes. And as we all knew when we got the late start this year, getting that extra hour rented was going to be difficult. We know we can probably do it for next year, the last hour of the evening, and some morning hours as well, to lane swimmers.
Got it.
It just took a minute to get us rolling. But I thank you. Thanks for your time, and thanks for the work that you do.
Thank you.
And then I yield the rest of my time to my --
Well, in that case, she's got no time.
She's much more succinct than I am.
I'm Sue Kets Miller, 12 Montgomery Avenue, Piny Branch Pool Committee. Thank you again for all of your support in getting this going. It's really going, you know, 400 swimmers a week plus 450 schoolkids who are swimming weekly for a six-week session, every third, fourth, and fifth grader in the city of Tacoma Park. That's all the East Silver Spring kids and all the Tacoma Park Elementary School kids swimming every week. The PTA runs three before-school clubs for beginning, intermediate, and advanced swimmers coming from the school as well. So for instance, those 20 beginner swimmers from the school are non-swimmers who've never had a chance to swim and are becoming swimmers, and that's really exciting. This is a grassroots community of swimmers, schoolchildren, Maple Avenue residents, and others. And if you go on a Sunday, I know a lot of you have used it. I know some of you are early-morning lap swimmers, but if you go on the Sunday, you'll see an amazing cross-section of residents, every age, every race, all kinds of people swimming together. And it's actually kind of a rare thing for the city to have that kind of space where we're all recreating together. And it's really a very precious thing. Today, we have sent out to the list serves throughout the city a piece urging everybody to advocate with the county council for the funding for next year. This is the time when we need to do this. I'm asking people to write from their personal experiences about what this pool means to them, why it's important, why in, you know, a densely populated area like this, the county rec, the county council needs to be investing in this kind of resource. And you should see that. Please send it out to your ward through your neighborhood associations. And that's all I'm going to say right now. Anything else?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, thank you. Elizabeth Brinkhamma, manager of Now and Then and Carroll Avenue resident. Thank you to councilmember Wright for your comments, and I just would like to reiterate basically what the councilmember has said. The meters on Laurel Avenue specifically in front of the storefronts are set at 30 minutes. We have currently been going -- undergoing some construction in the parking lot behind the shops in anticipation of new retail and new restaurant space and better parking, but in the interim, we have lost approximately 10 parking spaces. With the construction along Carroll Avenue, primarily in front of Fair Day's Play in a Mono, we've also lost some metered parking spaces. It's a daily occurrence that we have customers come in complaining that the meters are only 30 minutes. It just, as the councilmember said, it's not enough time to have a doctor's appointment, a luncheon meeting, run a few errands, and browse. And I fear that what we're doing is encouraging people to park in the garages on Ellsworth and Wayne Avenues in Silver Spring instead of shopping locally in Tacoma Park. There are some businesses there that are in some serious dire straits. And while I understand that the construction on Carroll Avenue is due to end in August, some seriously may not make it. I recently had the experience of driving into downtown DC, and along 20th Street and N Street, their parking meters are set for every seven and a half minutes. That's what a quarter will get you. But they are set for two hours. And while I don't in any way advocate setting our parking meters for a quarter and seven and a half minutes, I think people are willing to certainly pay, if it's a revenue-inducing concern, certainly willing to pay a little more at the meters, knowing that they will get the time and don't have to constantly look at their watches and cut their time in half. So anyway, I thank you for your time and your consideration.
Of course.
Barb, I wonder if maybe we could get some feedback from our community development section, because I know that we not too long ago changed the hours on those meters to address issues that the business owners had, and so it might be good to understand that and how maybe we might need to tweak them again.
Yeah, your understanding is correct. I know since I've been with the city, which has just been just almost five years, those meters had been set at 30 minutes because of the dry cleaner and businesses like that that we wanted to encourage turnover at the meters. Obviously, there's an issue being raised about construction and the potential impact of that, so I'll meet with the planning staff tomorrow.
Thank you.
I think that while we, if I may just quickly add, in an ideal world, of course, we would love two hours. I will save haggling time and say we'd be happy to compromise at an hour. Thank you.
Thanks.
I'm Rosalind Grigsby. I'm the executive director of the Old Tacoma Business Association, and I really just wanted to support and reaffirm the comments Elizabeth made. I have been in touch with the business owners along Laurel. I have been in ongoing conversations since I've been in the job, which is almost three years now, and that 30 minutes has been not an easy thing all the way along, but now it really does seem untenable. And in our efforts to make the town an inviting and welcoming place, and in our efforts to support local businesses, it seems like that is maybe a relatively small change that can be made that would be helpful. And I -- my hope was that I was asking something that relatively easy for council to take action on tonight, unlike some of the attempts I've come before you, so thank you.
Thanks. Anybody else?
Hello, my name is Erica Meyer, and I live at 7131 Sycamore Avenue. I am also the executive director of Compassion Over Killing, and I just wanted to say a few words, if I may, about the Tacoma Veg Week. I wanted to thank -- well, first, I'd actually like to extend my best wishes to councilmember Sniper for a speedy recovery. But I would like to thank the council and specifically Mayor Williams for consideration in signing the proclamation and in supporting the Tacoma Veg Week, and that it's truly an honor to live in a city that values non -- not only -- actually, not only values nonviolence and sustainable living, but acts upon those values. And I appreciate councilmembers -- councilmember Wright's interest in wind power as a way to move towards nonviolence and sustainable living. And I think that Tacoma Veg Week, this is going to be our city's first Veg Week, also embodies those values by encouraging residents to choose vegetarian foods as a way to protect the planet, to help animals, and to protect our own health. And I just wanted to express my appreciation for that.
Thank you. Anybody else? Okay, city managers' comments?
Sure, just a few things. I just wanted to make sure the council was aware of some of what we left at your places at the dais this evening. The agenda packet for Thursday night's budget work sessions was distributed this evening. Also at your places at the dais is a letter from the Nuclear Free Committee, basically expressing their support for a move to 100 percent purchase of wind power to fuel the city's facilities. There is also a communication from Catherine Tunis, the chair of the Committee on the Environment, relative to the community guard discussion that the council will be having just a little bit. Mayor, I don't know if this is something you were going to bring up, the request from Casa de Maryland?
I saw that after we had our comments, if you want to say something.
Sure. We received a request from Casa de Maryland asking that, I guess, the mayor essentially write a letter to Mr. Torres, who is the executive director, expressing support for their continued operation of the Silver Spring Center for Employment and Training. My guess is that this relates to the fact that, my understanding is the county was going to be accepting proposals from contractors for the operation of this facility. I'm not sure what the council would wish to take that up this evening.
Maybe if people now have a copy of this, if they want to just give some feedback, and I'll --
Sure, okay.
I can deal with this this week, tomorrow. And anybody has anything they want to let me know, if you can do that.
The last thing, which is, I think, the council probably saw the email from the deputy city manager earlier today. I think as the council was aware, we have been pursuing funding from a variety of sources, seeking help and financial assistance with some repairs through the two bridges in the city. One of those avenues had been pursuing stimulus funding from through the county, basically as we had been urged to do by councilmember Urban and councilmember Elrich. We did receive a communication today from the executive branch of the county government, essentially declining to share any of their stimulus funding with the municipalities. So I just wanted to make sure the council had seen that communication.
I saw it, I wasn't happy.
They're saying with municipal funding, I mean, stimulus funding related to bridges or any sort of stimulus funding?
Most of the transportation stimulus funding is basically going to the counties, and it's up to the counties to decide whether they use that for their own purposes or they would share any of that with the municipalities. My read of the communication that we got from Mr. Gonzalez from the Department of Transportation is that the -- at least the executive branch's opinion is that they will not be sharing any of the transportation-related stimulus funding with the municipalities.
And is your sense that that's final, because we've heard from at least some councilmembers, including councilmember Leventhal, that he would happily work with us to try and see if we could use stimulus funding?
I think there'll probably need to be some internal discussions with the county. If Ben may be able to explain this a little bit better, how that works, but if it's up to the executive branch, I think unless they're changing their mind, this appears to be final. Obviously, our hope in sharing this information with both all the county council members as well as some of the governor's staff, as well as Congressman Van Hollen, is that perhaps some other discussions may take place and the county executive may change his mind, but that remains to be seen.
I hope the county executive legate doesn't have to drive across that bridge.
Yeah, exactly.
And it's interesting to me that it was only last Thursday night when a number of us attended a briefing with Congressman Van Hollen, that he specifically said that he supported municipalities sharing that money since it only went to the county. And he -- I brought it up in a particular context of the bridge, and he was very supportive of that, so. it up in the particular context of the bridge, and he was very supportive of that. It might be news to him, but the county's going to keep it all. And it was also interesting to see the executive staff's lack of understanding of how highway user revenue are controlled and distributed by the state, not the county. I was not impressed with that memo.
It was somewhat puzzling, yes. So that concludes my report, unless there's questions from a council member about any matter.
And I would just hope that the two county council staff who are here might share that with their bosses and their bosses' colleagues and anybody else at the county, that we are not happy about that and are looking to try and make changes in that we'll call tentative decision by the county executive's office.
But acknowledge that both of the representatives here
Have been very supportive. Yes, and we appreciate that. And we're scheduled to do special session items. We'll go ahead and do those because those will move fairly quickly, and then I do know that Ben Stutz is here from council member Urban's office on the Community Gardens project. Are you okay if we still get to you at 8:30? Okay. We always try and accommodate the county and make sure that we can get you in and out, but I know that taking things in order will make our library director happy.
I'm going to go, Walt.
So first is the special session, first reading ordinance authorizing the execution of a contract with a consultant to assist with matters related to the proposed relocation of Washington Adventist Hospital, and the city attorney is here to say a few words about that.
Good evening. This is an ordinance to authorize the procurement of a healthcare consultant to assist the city regarding the potential relocation of Washington Adventist Hospital. They'd be helping us on two tracks. One would be preparing the city's presentation to the Maryland Healthcare Commission that has to approve the hospital's move, and in that context, the consultant would be helping gather and analyze data to make sure that the commission hears the city's concerns and protects our interests. And the second aspect, and these things would go on simultaneously, would be assisting the city in reaching a memorandum of understanding with the hospital that would set quantifiable requirements in an enforceable agreement with the hospital to retain certain healthcare facilities in or near the city that would make sure that our residents have adequate and convenient access to healthcare, particularly residents that are uninsured or underinsured and residents that rely on public transportation. The firm that we're recommending, it's called PDA Incorporated, it's a North Carolina firm that has experience that should serve the city well in both aspects of the project, and they're really the only firm that seemed to be able to help us with both things. They have experience with these certificate of need proceedings, and they also have experience helping local governments deal with contracts with hospitals, and they also help hospitals, urgent care clinics, and physician practices with strategic business planning to figure out what the needs of an area are and what they need to do to meet those needs. So we think that it's a worthwhile investment and an important issue for the city.
Would somebody like to move the ordinance?
Second.
Move by council member Wright and second by council member Simmons. Is there any council discussion? Council member Wright?
I have a couple of comments. One is, I thought we were, when this idea was proposed or talked about, I didn't expect that the amount was going to come back at such a high level. I think this contract is not to exceed $60,000. My experience in dealing with consultants is most of the time you end up at that not-to-exceed number, so I'm a little bit concerned about that. I thought we were talking about someone who could give the city attorney some advice in dealing with the hospital and understanding economics. This seems much more expansive than I thought we were talking about, and I'm a little concerned about the amount of money we're spending, in particular, sort of surprised that they talk about being reimbursed for things like travel at 1.2 times the amount billed. I've done consulting myself for very well-thought-of firms, and I've never seen a situation where you're passing on adding a tax on top of the reimbursements. So that would be one thing I'd be uncomfortable with, other than just the total number. And then the other thing that gives me significant concern is that they have no experience with the certificate of need process in Maryland. I know they have a lot of experience in North Carolina. I'm not sure how analogous those processes are, but I don't think it's dealing with a federal situation where it's the same in each state. I think they're actually probably, could be fairly different depending on the state's regulations and details of how the insurance industry is and healthcare industry is regulated. So those are the two things that actually give me a big concern. I'm afraid we might be spending too much money, and we might be spending on a consultant that actually doesn't have the specific expertise that we would need. The local person they have in there is interesting because he does live here, but again, he doesn't have certificate of need experience in Maryland, and he's much more of a healthcare marketing guy than someone who would understand economics or the certificate of need process. So I don't know if you have thoughts about those comments or concerns that I have that you might be willing to share with us?
Sure. Certainly, I understand the concern about cost, and it is a high figure. We initially got a figure that was higher than that, that involved a lot more travel, and we tried to whittle down the services, but this $60,000 figure is essentially the minimum that the consultant felt was reasonable to enable her to do a competent and professional job. The issue of the travel, that's certainly something that we can go back to them on this week and maybe come up with something else for a second reading. On the issue of Maryland-specific experience, it appears with the people that we talked to with certificate of need experience, they have experience in several different states. There are nuances to each state, but the basic model seems to be consistent, and they seem to be able to adapt to the unique aspects of different states.
Other questions?
Ken, if I can just add one thing. I know you and Sue had actually talked to several firms, and my understanding is that PDA actually offered the lowest hourly rates by far of all the firms that you spoke with. Is that correct?
Right. Their top person's rate is $260 an hour, and the next lowest rate was in the 300s, and the next person was in the mid-400s.
Okay, and we're going to have second reading of this, and I believe Sue will be here for second reading?
What about in terms of what you guys actually need? Like, is this, it feels like we went out and tried to talk to people about what we needed, and this is what we could find in terms of someone who is willing to engage with us to give us any sort of advice? And maybe we're getting more advice and more help than we need simply because this is the lowest amount we've been able to find so far for a consultant that deals in this area? Is that?
I mean, I think that this person had the best grasp of what we do need, and I think there are a lot of complex issues that are going to go into getting a good agreement to make sure that what the services that we end up getting are one, subject to charity care requirements, to make sure that whatever's going to be there is going to be providing service to uninsured residents. One thing we want is an emergency room, and it's a very tricky regulatory process to make sure that they can actually have an emergency room that's going to have to meet certain federal requirements so it can get reimbursements for Medicare and Medicaid. So I think there are a lot of complex issues, and, you know, I'm sure that the hospital is going to be well-versed in all these issues, and I think to get a fair agreement for the city, we will need considerable assistance.
And this is just the first reading ordinance. Do you have a second? So I know we're under a tight timeframe for this also, but the other thing I guess I would request is to see if the consultant would come back and propose adding someone to their team that actually has certificate of need experience in Maryland, because I hear you and totally agree with you about all the details of regulations, but a lot of those regulations are very specific to the state, and I don't want someone, I would prefer not to have someone learning on the job. And then I will say this, that I'll vote tonight because I realize there's only four of us, and if I were to vote no, we wouldn't move the second reading ordinance, and the representatives who actually have the hospital in there or right next to their ward aren't here to vote, but I do reserve the right to vote against this in the second reading ordinance.
Council member Simmons?
Thank you. I continue to dislike these time-critical decisions when there's not enough time to do an excellent job, and I feel like this is, you know, an interesting consultant that you've brought forward with PDA. I think, though, that there are some issues that, as council member Wright has pointed out, I think it would be helpful if we could have some other alternatives when we look at this again, rather than just PDA, if we couldn't have one or two other alternatives, rather than just stopping when you did at the ones that we have in here, if maybe there isn't another alternative that we could be considering. And I guess my question would be then, if we vote on this at first reading, where would that put us if we had a different choice at the next vote?
Whether or not you would be starting from scratch, I mean?
Right.
That's probably a legal question. I'll defer to Ken. I think my guess is that if you started with a reading of an ordinance that involved a different firm, I would think it'd probably be cleaner to say we're starting from scratch, and that's a first reading ordinance, because I think to have second reading of an ordinance and be switching out the name of the firm is a pretty significant change.
And what is the date when we have to have a final decision?
Well, one of the, yeah, one of the things that Sue and Ken and I have talked about is obviously the clock really starts ticking once the state healthcare commission essentially dockets Washington Adventist Hospital's certificate of need application, and we don't control when that happens. That could be, you know, numerous back and forth between the commission and the hospital, basically of when they say their application is complete. The commission can make a very quick decision and docket that application, and then the city's time period in which to act becomes very narrow. So I think it's sort of a guessing game. Council member Simmons, I wish I could give you a more definitive answer, but it's tied to actions that the city doesn't control.
Right. Sorry, just to clarify, can I ask a question? If I, once they dock it, how long is it until they, 60?
I think, is that correct, Ken?
It's, I think it's 30 days from when they dock it, and when they dock it, it could be as early as 10 days from when the application was submitted, which was last Friday, or it could be, there could be lots of back and forth. It could be 30 days before it even gets docked.
I would like to leave my request there. I think, you know, I don't feel 100% confident that this is the best choice, and so I would like to see if there are one or two others, and then we can face the next difficult decision at the next reading of whether we would want to substitute someone else for this particular vendor.
And it sounds like if we can get a little bit more information in the interim about kind of the process of how we ended it at this firm, that would be helpful to have that.
Yeah, I will have Sue and Ken send that out. I know one of the challenges that we face is some of the other firms with whom we've spoken basically have conflicts because they're already advising the other hospitals who are weighing in, and so we were trying to find someone who was truly independent and basically wasn't already in the game, so to speak. But we can certainly put together that information of who was contacted and who had conflicts and kind of who was left on the list.
I'd like to find another choice. I'm not looking for those that have been thrown out. I'm looking for somebody that might be a better choice.
One of the challenges, council member Simmons, is that in order to, we were trying to essentially piggyback off the firms who responded to a county request for proposal when the county was going to do a county-wide health assessment, if you may recall that going back a year or so. So that's the list that we started with. In the absence of doing that, then I think we would be issuing a RFP ourselves, and obviously that would take a considerable amount of time.
And that prior effort by the county was prior to the change in administration of the county level? Am I correct?
I think it was actually during the Leggett administration, I believe.
Could be. I thought it was during the prior administration because I thought things changed. Councilor Robinson, you have a question?
I mean, I don't like to spend money, but I think this, to put it in context, this is money that we're anticipating spending to get a memorandum in place so that it can guide our relationship with the hospital into the future, and we're talking about a reasonable amount of time into the future. As I recall, it's at least 10 years, and then, is that right?
I mean, that's to be negotiated, but certainly it'll be a priority to have it as long as possible.
Right, and so the $60,000 is a chunk of money, but the amount that we could save or the way we could position ourselves to get the kind of hospital services into the future would far outweigh this investment. And I also, I'm sensitive to you, city manager Matthews, and our city attorney in figuring out what's an appropriate proposal. So I'm content with this. I also would note that the 1.2, I don't think that relates to their time in travel. I think it only relates to their cost in travel, so if they're
I'm fully aware of it.
If they're billed $100, they mark it up 20% for their own administrative purposes. That's my reading of it.
Right, and I find that rather unusual in the consulting world, and it's not like I work for a mom-and-pop consulting firm.
Got it. Okay, well, I don't have really much in the way of reservations on this.
Any public comment? Anybody dare want to weigh in on this one? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, it carries at first reading, and we'll get more information as it comes back from the next one.
Yeah, I was just going to note, when I talked to the city attorney this morning, one of the things that she had requested, and I would just share this with the council, was under our procurement ordinance, we can typically spend up to $5,000 without an ordinance being, a contract being approved by the council, and Sue had wanted me to bring that up. I think given the concerns that have been raised this evening, obviously we will not be triggering that provision, starting to work with this firm, but that had been the hope, I think, of the city attorney.
Okay. Then, next item is the consent agenda. There's three items on it. A single reading ordinance authorizing purchase and replacement commuter services, a single reading ordinance authorizing execution of a contract for streetscape improvements on Holton Lane, and a single reading ordinance ending the contract for the construction of storm drain outfall behind New York Avenue. All those in favor of the consent agenda, do you say aye? Sorry, we've got to do a roll call.
Making a motion.
That's right, roll call, motion?
Moved.
Second, second.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Williams?
Aye.
Council member Barry? Council member Clay? Council member Robinson?
Aye.
Council member Simmons?
Aye.
Council member Simper? Council member Wright?
Aye.
Then we will move to the Then we will move to the budget work session and library. Welcome. Welcome.
Thank you.
And if I can just note for my colleagues that what I'd like to do is let the library director make her presentation, and then we'll do questions.
Yeah, before Ellen gets started, I guess I just wanted to mention a few things to the council just generally. As you go through each of the individual departmental budgets, one of the things that we have tried to do consistently, I think, in response to comments we've heard from the council, is to highlight on the agenda cover sheet the most significant expenditures that you will see in each department's operating budget. I believe that was recently a specific request of Councilmember Wright's, trying to call out where most of the money in each of the departmental budgets is going. The other thing that you may note on each of the agenda cover sheets is under the fiscal impact section, and some of this information was included in your budget binders, but just for ease of reference, is to note any revenues that are generated or associated with the department's activities, and then trying to provide you essentially what the net cost of that particular service is. This was somewhat in response to comments we've heard both from the public as well as from the council in terms of where are people's tax dollars going and what is it costing to provide a service? So as you look at the fiscal impact section for each of the departments, as we go through this process over the next few weeks, you will see sort of a net cost of service. And then lastly, what I asked each of the departments to do was to try to talk a little bit about their initiatives or projects that are anticipated in fiscal year 2010 as they relate to the strategic plan. In some instances, there are specific dollar amounts that have been noted, but for many other departments, most of their expenditures are personnel-related. It's hard to sort of, kind of parse that out among different initiatives. But where possible, we did try to include that information.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Robbins?
Okay, thank you. As Barb said, you do have the library's proposed fiscal year 10 budget highlights in your agenda packet. And I'd like to start by drawing your attention to some specific things that I think characterize them generally. First of all, the library does have programs and services that address each of the three areas in the council's strategic plan. And I'll go through some of those quickly. The main component, and thus the major cost of virtually all library initiatives, is Most services and programs are supported by the same personnel. As all library staff work in multiple roles, we don't have staff, except where the computer center is concerned, we don't have staff exclusively dedicated to certain functions. Lastly, the Friends of the Library help to fund many of our services and programs. In fact, seven of the initiatives listed here are funded entirely or in part by the Friends. And I'll just mention some of the programs in this document that are new or expanded or that you may not be aware of in the context of your strategic plan. First, under sustainability, our use of multi-station computers. Currently, we have 28 workstations on six computers in the computer center and library, and these result in significant environmental savings. Our accessibility by foot and our proximity to five schools further reduces our carbon footprint. And we're pursuing cost savings by working with the Friends of the Library, as I said, with the Friends of Mike Morrisey, and in other ways. In the past 12 months, the Friends of the Library gave us more than $12,000 in gifts. Under livable community, we probably do more in this area than in any other by creating and nurturing community connections. We serve non-native speakers of English through Spanish and French circle times. We serve middle school students through the band book club and tween writing club. We promote reading readiness among families with young children by alternating programs for infants, one-year-olds, and two-year-olds with their parents or caregivers. We serve teens and young adults through targeted materials like young adult fiction, our expansive graphic novel collection, and our Friday Comics Jam. High school students and parents seeking college prep, I'm sorry, ceiling, seeking college preparation through the College Bound series and targeted materials. Adults seeking jobs or career change through programs in conjunction with Montgomery Works. And adult speakers of Amharic seeking computer instruction in the computer center. We support arts, literature, and reading in partnership with the Friends in such endeavors as the Friends Reading Group, the Favorite Poem Evening, Spring for Poetry, special poetry readings at the farmer's market, and other programs. Under engaged and service-oriented government, we plan to continue to build on our existing volunteer program, which includes community service for book reviewing, helping at programs or in the computer rooms, helping at book sales, or helping with homework in the library. We plan to continue publicizing library services in all wards of the city and to try to explore ways of extending library services into all wards as well. We will continue to use blogs on the library webpage to publicize library programs and online registration as well. Online registration for programs, which we've been doing for about a year. We're working right now on the adoption of circulation software upgrades that will enable online book renewal and reservation. And we will also continue to, continue and refine in-house customer surveys and performance measures. And in the context of performance measures, I'd like to point out especially that from, between fiscal year '07 and '08, our circulation increased 13%. And in fiscal year '09, it's expected to increase another 11.6%. Our in-library use of materials increased 18.6% between fiscal year '07 and '08, and is expected to increase another 16.5% in fiscal year '09. And our program attendance increased by 88% between '07 and '08, and is holding steady in '09. So those are some of the highlights and the ways in which we believe the library addresses, speaks to your strategic plan. So I'm open to questions.
Thank you. Questions or comments? Councilmember Robinson?
To what do you attribute the increasing use of library services?
Multiple things. We're doing an awful lot of programming. We're doing programming on the weekends, which we didn't used to do before. Karen McPherson is doing a lot of our programs, but also we're contracting with various people to do such things as the French circle time, the Spanish circle time. The Friends are actually paying for those programs. So we're increasing program attendance in a lot of different ways. I think in other respects, just the introduction of Wi-Fi into the library, it's amazing how you will see often every table filled with readers or people working on their computers. It just brings people into the library for a variety of purposes. The computer center itself has, you know, which is an extension of the library, of course, has brought a lot of people in. And I think the community center has taken some people, some kids especially, who used to hang out in the library, into the computer center. I mean, I'm sorry, into the community center for some of the recreation-oriented activities. And a lot of the kids who are left in the children's room after school are actually working. I mean, there are times, many times, when the room will be almost absolutely quiet and still filled with kids. And that's something we didn't always see, and we're happy about it. And I think it pleases parents, it pleases kids. It's a good thing, all the way around. I would imagine, you know, the fact that the economy is, as they say, turning more people toward libraries, toward the borrowing of materials, rather than their purchase, is probably true. You know, I could only speak to that anecdotally. I don't have figures to support it, except what we see here, the library use is definitely on the rise.
And can you say a couple of words about your personnel, your staff?
Well, we have wonderful staff that are expert in a number of different areas. Karen, as many people know, is extremely enthusiastic about doing programs and, you know, does a lot of them. You know, Rebecca Brown is a reference librarian, also coordinator of the computer center, you know, very knowledgeable, and, you know, has really done a great deal to make the computer center the self-sustaining, not, self-sustaining in the sense that it is not labor-intensive, really, to keep that division of the library functioning. And it functions, by and large, very smoothly. And a lot of that has to do with decisions that she was very paramount in in the beginning. People like Dave Burbank, who is a library assistant, who has developed our graphic novel collection, works a lot with teens, a lot with kids. You know, by and large, we have a staff that is dedicated, educated, know what they're doing, responsive to the community, and know the community well. And, you know, success is really a factor of all of them.
How many other staffers do you have besides the three that you've mentioned?
We have five library assistants and three librarians as coordinators and me, and two shelters. And, you know, there's also a small pool of substitutes, people who pitch in. In the computer center, there are, there's one 30-hour person and two 10-hour people.
Okay, so Karen, Rebecca, and Dave are kind of upper-level staff?
Dave is a library assistant. He's just someone with particular expertise in areas that, he interacts with the public a lot, and the public knows him. If you're talking about librarians, that would be Rebecca, Nick Fontem, and Karen, and me, so.
Okay, I'm just trying to get a sense of your staff.
Right, yes.
So three librarians.
Three librarians who are full-time.
Nick, Rebecca, and Fontem.
Yeah, those are all full-time. Nick is, again, technical services has a lot to do with the, you know, the circulation database, keeping those things running smoothly, and is working toward getting us the software upgrades that we need to
And then three shelters. And then three shelters.
Two shelters.
Two shelters.
Five library assistants.
Okay, and five library assistants. And those assistants are also at the front desk? Is that what the assistants do?
Everybody works at the front desk. Everybody in the library works with the public in the front desk. And the, the standard for us is to have a librarian working with the public all the time that we're open. In reality, it doesn't always play out that way because librarians sometimes just aren't there. If people are on vacation or sick, we might have to have someone else, you know, substitute for them, but there are always librarians there. So everybody works on the desk, everybody works one evening, everybody works occasional Saturdays. That includes me, that includes everybody. Thanks. You're welcome.
Councilmember Simmons?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you for your report. I continue to be impressed annually with the good management of the library, and I appreciate the dedication you have to the city and the city residents. Also been very pleased to see the technology center and how smoothly it's been run for the last year, and how the participation from the community, the use from the community has really increased during the last year.
Yeah.
When you were here a year ago, we were still having issues with young people after school being disruptive in the library, and I wonder if that's improved at all through this last year?
I think there's gradual noticeable improvement in the children's room. We still have walk-through traffic. Kids hanging out on the Philadelphia Avenue side, walking through and are sometimes disruptive.
Okay. And I had another question about the online content. I know last year you had talked some about, you know, access to periodicals and other material through an online service that you were, you had available. Something through the internet, people were able to access?
We, our catalog is online.
The catalog, but there was also some content also.
It was subscriptions to certain magazines and newspapers.
Oh, yeah. Oh, absolutely. We've had that all along. We have two subscription databases that are available to any cardholder, you know, just by putting in the barcode on their library card.
And that, do you have any feel for how well that's used?
No. I mean, there may be figures, and I could certainly get back to you on that, but they contain like over 1,000, in most cases, full-text magazines, newspapers.
I know there's cost associated.
Radio subscriptions, a whole range of things.
Right. I know there's cost associated with that, and be curious to see how well the community is using that, whether it's, needs to be better advertised, or whether it's actually being used adequately.
I think it's used, it's on our bookmark. We refer people to those resources all the time. It's one of the, you know, the great things that a small library like us can have, where you can actually provide tools far beyond what you can, you know, contain on the shelves. You know, we're able to do that through subscription databases, through other databases, and as well as through, you know, the internet. It's changed everything for small libraries, and it's very valuable to us.
Two areas that I would be interested to hear your plans are for collaboration with the Recreation Department in the development of creative writing. I don't know if courses is the right word, but programs that would help develop especially the young people into creative writing.
There is a writing club for middle schoolers.
And the other is in the development of computer skills. I know that there's been very little of that with the Technology Center, and I think we have a great resource there. And I'd be interested to hear your plans for providing more development of computer skills.
Are you speaking of certain age groups in particular, kids? Or, because we did, I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I always focus on the kids for these programs.
Of course. We did do some workshops last summer for kids. We had someone on our staff who was very skilled, actually one of the 10-hour assistants, who is now gone to work for the Smithsonian, she's no longer with us. So we'll have to find other ways to do that, but that's certainly one of our goals, is to offer more for kids.
Right, and as you look towards the future in this coming year, those are two areas that I would like to see some expansion.
Right. Well, you mentioned the writing, and there is the writing club. But you also mentioned the collaboration with the Recreation Department. Were you thinking of that in those two areas in particular?
Not just those two areas, but in other areas. I think that the library and you and your staff have skills in one area, and the Recreation Department has certainly facilities that you could expand into for some of the programs. And I think that collaborating with the Recreation Department could be advantageous. And again, I'd like to see that not just with the library and the Recreation Department, but I think all of the city departments need to think about how they can work together and enhance each other's work.
Absolutely, I agree.
Thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Wright?
First, I want to thank you for all your service and the wonderful job you do. Can you remind me, did any of our staff win any awards this year?
Ah, yes, as a matter of fact. Karen McPherson, our children's librarian, and Alana Nathanson, a middle schooler, were the recipients of the Imroff Award, which is given by the American Library Association every year for educators or librarians, sometimes other people, who either fight against censorship or take a stand that is noteworthy in some way. And they were nominated they were nominated jointly for the award by, by Jim Kuhn, who's, um, involved with the American Library Association, also on the Board of the Friends, for the, um, Band Books Club. And, um, and they did win the award, which, um, is a great honor for us, all of us. And, um, so they're going to be going, um, to Chicago in July to receive the award, and, um, hopefully I'll be going too, to see them receive it. But, um, you know, there's, they're in some very lofty company, and, um, it's a very cool thing. We're very happy and proud of them.
Great. Do we have, um, numbers on the Wi-Fi usage? You, you mentioned that a lot of people are using. I didn't know if that was in the, the computer center, uh...
Yes, it's available all over. It's available in the computer center, and we have some workstations set up in the little, you know, atrium area there, but also in the library, and a lot of people come into the library to use it.
Yeah, but do we have, do we get usage numbers on how many people based on the Wi-Fi network? Does it tell us anything about how many people use it and for the number of hours and that sort of stuff?
I don't know if you, you know, that's something I would have to talk to, um...
It might be good...
Probably Able about IT.
Right.
I don't know if those figures are available. We do have Wi-Fi printing, which, um, I think we were, if we aren't the only library in the area to offer that now, we, we were initially, and, um, you know, so people enjoy that as well. But I don't know if we have figures on usage. I could certainly find that out.
I was just curious, because we do have figures here in the budget fact we received around the number of Internet session log-ons and hours used. I assume that probably was for the actual computers and not the Wi-Fi network.
Yes, right.
So it'd be nice to have... Um, a couple of things that aren't necessarily specific to the library, but, um, came up and more for the city manager. I think Councilmember Robinson's questions get at the questions around how the staffing is structured, so I think it would be helpful for us in each department to have an organizational chart, um, which doesn't have to include people's names, what sort of functions, whether that function is a full or, uh, part-time, and what part-time percentage. Um, and then if it's not, uh, obvious from the title, sort of just at a very high level, what that function does, I think would be helpful as we kind of look through the budget and understand what we're paying for, and, uh, so...
Sure. Included, um, in the budget binder are the full-time equivalent, which I know only goes so far.
Yeah.
We did try to break it out and show for each division which positions were receiving benefits and which were not, which gives you some sense of the hours, but, um, we had given you organizational charts in the published budget document last year, but we'll just print that out again.
Great.
Um, so you can just put it in your binder, keep it all together.
Thank you. Um, and then I would just note, you know, I just did some calculations on the fringe benefits as a percentage of wages. You know, fringe benefits are thirty-one percent in the library as a percentage of wages, and that's not a reflection on what you're doing, but I think it, uh, is connected to something you alluded to when we were talking about the budget in general, is how rich the benefits package is here in Tacoma Park, and it's something we need to look at further. So I, I, I just, when I saw the numbers, I did the calculation, and thirty-one percent, um, at least in the businesses I've experienced, is pretty high. Usually it's kind of in the twenty-three to twenty-five percent would be on the high side, so... Then I just, for the public, I thought it was really interesting that, um, if you looked at the population, you, you guys did calculations about circulation per capita, you know, six circulations per person in the city, which means that based on circulation numbers, we have about seventeen thousand three hundred people. If you take the amount of money we're spending in the general fund, that means we spend about fifty dollars per person in the library. So I frequently get questions about, we're paying too much taxes in Tacoma Park, what are we getting for those taxes? So, on average, fifty bucks a year you get in the library. Um, so, obviously, for some people, that's more, because property taxes, the majority of where our general fund comes from, are not uniform over people, uh, over households, but I think that's a good calculation for people to think about. Um, in general, I think that's probably a pretty good bargain. Um, and then, uh, um, yeah, we just have people, I, I plan to go through the budget and try and put together a little presentation for the everyday person to understand about where our property taxes are going and what they're, they're paying for. Um, here in this budget, you can't really break out what, um, uh, you know, whether the, the county money that's coming in or the library fines are associated with the library or the computer center, but I imagine it's sort of, uh, not so easy to do. Maybe you could do the library fines, but the funds from the, uh, from the county I know go to the whole, the whole pot, so... Um, but it'll be interesting when you look at public works if there's a way to have more level of granularity around, um, street maintenance and what from the general fund is actually going towards street maintenance, for example. Um, I know that's not really possible in the library, but something to, to start to think about. So I don't think I have any other questions besides that.
Okay. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And we'll, uh, try and sign you up and some of my colleagues for soft policy.
Soft policy, all right.
That was a joke.
Um, I, I think both Ellen and I have jotted down the additional information the council wanted. I guess as we go through each of the individual departmental budgets, it would be helpful, Mayor, if I get a sense of whether the council, at least at this juncture, is relatively comfortable with the proposed budget, or if there's other information besides what you've already stated that you want me to bring back.
I had one, one other question is, basically, if we're gonna reduce the budget, if you look at it, um, our choices are cut the money we spend on books or, um, cut personnel. And, and, uh, so one of my questions would be, if we were to cut personnel, what happens? Does the library open less hours?
Yes.
We've done that in the past. We reduced hours, didn't we? Sorry, that was only the county.
Yeah, what, what I've tried to do, working with the departments on each of the agenda cover sheets, if you look under special consideration, is we've tried to highlight where you might be able to achieve minor savings, and certainly there are ways just to restructure city services generally, um, but those basically reflect the conversations I had with each of the department heads in going through preparing this budget. So certainly if you want more information on those ideas, we can, can bring that back to you.
You, um, City Manager Matthews, you were gonna, um, have like a ten percent less option for us on, on the budgets. Where's that reflected?
Those were the conversations, Councilmember Robinson, that I had with each of the department heads. Um, if that is something that you would like me to bring back in some detail, we can do that. Obviously, when you're talking about, for almost any city department, reductions of ten percent, we are talking about cutting personnel. Um, so if you would like that information, we can bring that back. Obviously, if it's, I mean, I guess I would ask the council if it's just an exercise to talk about it, when you start putting people's positions and names on a piece of paper and, or it's out there in the public realm that we are proposing to cut it, that obviously has impacts on employee morale, so...
Sure.
I'm certainly happy to give that to the council if you want. I guess I would just ask, unless the council is serious about moving in that direction, I prefer not to start that unrest in the workforce.
Oh, I, I just thought it was something that we had agreed on last year, I, I...
Yeah, those were the, um, items that I have discussed with, with each of the department heads, so, um...
I would suggest that this is probably not the good night to discuss that or to decide that, because we have so many absences tonight.
Sure.
And maybe that would be part of the general discussion that I requested earlier.
And I would say, um, uh, I, I definitely don't want to do it if it's just an exercise and we don't, aren't seriously gonna consider it. If we do look at it, um, I think it would be most helpful to also know what the implications of that are. So in the case of the library, we're gonna reduce ten percent, and that means reduce staff, then, um, then I, then I'd like to know sort of what, what are we talking about in different hours?
How many hours?
Yeah.
How many hours?
And then lastly, I guess I would, um, this is to city employees, um, you know, I, we realize this is a hard discussion in hard economic times, um, and if we are asking for that information, it doesn't necessarily, necessarily mean that we don't think you're working hard or you're contributing to the city, um, but those are the trade-offs we have to, to look at, and, um, I hope that that wouldn't affect morale, and you, you all would know that we will do our best to make the right decisions that will help the city overall, and part of that is involve in thinking about the employees.
Right, we're just trying to do our job.
I know.
Yeah, we just don't want collateral damage.
Right.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, next is the presentation on the Community Gardens project, and I also just wanted to get a sense, I see a number of people in the audience, and I wanted to make sure that when we go to the remaining budget work session items, to get a sense of, uh, who's here, if there's a particular interest people have, so that we want to try and get to the ones that, uh, for, when people are here, that we can, uh, get to your item and, uh, get you home. So I know that, uh, we have a couple people here who are interested in the, uh, discussion on the, uh, pine branch pool, um, or is anybody here for the public works of a stormwater discussion? If I can see hands. Now, I know, I know the public works during, during...
Kind of playing...
So, so I'm going to assume that people are here for either the Community Gardens project or the pool, so, uh, maybe we'll, uh, flip the pool item in before the public works and, uh, stormwater discussions, so the people who are here for that can, uh, get out of here sooner. So I just want to note that before we take this item on the Community Gardens project. And we have with us this evening, uh, policy analyst for Councilmember Irvin, Ben Stutz, and David Vismariff, who's the County Parks Chief for Horticultural Services. Welcome.
Evening, uh, Ben Stutz, Councilmember Irvin's policy analyst. It's a pleasure to be here, Councilmember, as mayor. Um, wanted to come and give you an, uh, update on the Community Gardens project, uh, which Councilmember Irvin proposed to the Department of Parks late last fall, and, uh, since that time, the Department of Parks has, uh, done a great job, um, going out, identifying sites, uh, working with us and Councilmember Robinson and Councilmember Wright and the mayor on, um, where we go from here and what those first pilot sites will look like. Um, I guess the short history, uh, we sent a letter to Parks in, uh, November. They reviewed what we asked for and came back to us and said it was something that they would be willing to, uh, try. Um, part of the discussion was, uh, they needed to start slowly, and we asked that they identify communities in the Down County area, specifically in the Silver Spring, Tacoma Park area, so that residents living in apartments and, uh, with condos or houses with small backyards, uh, might, uh, in particular, have the opportunity to go out and get a community garden plot and grow their own food and vegetables, et cetera. Um, the Department of Parks went out and identified, um, a handful of sites that they thought had merit. Um, they, uh, specifically, uh, told us that they would not do sites in, um, David, correct me if I'm wrong, uh, stormwater...
Fruit valley.
Stream valley areas, um, due to runoff considerations. Um, we were looking, uh, they were looking for sites that had sunlight, um, were fairly passive in their use of other recreational activities. Um, what else is on the list there?
Uh, sizable areas that contain, contain fifteen plots, at least.
So with that list, uh, they came back with a bunch of sites, um, which was, uh, presented to a meeting, um, which I know staff from the city was in, um, and elected officials. And, um, we had two sites in the city, Sligo Overlook Park, um, in Ward Three, near New Hampshire Avenue, and Silver Spring Intermediate Park, directly on the border of Silver Spring and Tacoma Park, um, by Montgomery College, the intersection of four-ten and Chicago. Um, since that time, uh, we've scheduled, uh, nine community meetings to get a sense from folks, um, what their thoughts were on the proposed sites, and, um, fifty percent of the, uh, two proposed pilots are gonna move forward. Um, an overview real quick, uh, the Sligo Overlook Park, um, I think, uh, based on the community's, uh, existing interest in having their new park possibly be considered for a community garden, um, was definitely helpful. Um, they, you know, knew what they wanted, and, uh, when we went out to meet with them, um, we heard positive recommendations and thoughts, um, from all the residents who attended. Um, and I'll let David go over, uh, the details on that site, but we're going to move forward with that site. The Silver Spring Intermediate Park, uh, on the border of Silver Spring and Tacoma Park, um, was a slightly different story. Um, when Parks went out to look at the site, it was winter. I think that, um, assessing the level of usage was, uh, not ideal. Um, and since that time, we've had a bunch of meetings, uh, in and around the area there. David and I went out on a, uh, Saturday morning to meet with folks for about two hours to hear their concerns and thoughts about using, uh, part of the park for community gardens. And, um, when we discussed the options with, uh, our bosses, um, came to the conclusion that Silver Spring Intermediate Park was not a good pilot site. Um, one, there is a lot of additional uses in the park. Uh, two, um, we're stretched to begin with. This is something Parks took on out of their good hearts to conduct, and I think that putting a pilot in a site where thirty, forty, fifty percent of folks in the very adjacent community were not going to be happy with the, uh, program, uh, was not where we wanted to start. And, uh, I think we saw that there was still opportunity in Silver Spring going forward to find additional sites where we could do this. So, um, that's where we are right now, and, uh, happy to take questions, but I think David maybe should show you what Sligo Overlook Park they have in store. Uh, it's really exciting, and let him have that.
Okay, great, thanks, Ben, and thank you all for inviting me tonight. Appreciate being here with you tonight. Uh, it's been a interesting process for me. I've been assigned to community gardens for the last three months, learned a lot in three months, met a lot of interesting people, and have gotten a lot of support from Valerie and Ben, and Councilmember Robinson has been to a couple meetings, so I appreciate his support. Mayor Williams has been at one of our meetings, so appreciate all the support we've been getting. Uh, I'm very excited about Sligo Overlook. We've got a tremendous base of community, uh, support for that, uh, community garden, and we're off and running, and I kind of want to share it with you tonight, what we're gonna be doing at that community garden, so you kind of know where we're headed. We're headed very quickly to that. We still have a planting date of May sixteenth, which is coming up very quickly, so if I can stand up a little bit and show you, um, kind of the map, and show you, is everybody familiar where Sligo Overlook Park is? I don't have to really explain that.
Yes.
Everybody's familiar with that. Uh, let me show you first what the plots are gonna look like. It's kind of a linear park, and I know the audience is not gonna be able to see this, so I'll kind of flip back and forth, but, um, what we plan on doing, I've got this upside down, is...
You can, you can probably, if you move that way just a little bit, and kind of go sideways, everybody gets to see.
Okay. Am I good with that? I'm not good there.
We're, we're, we're gonna be renovating this space shortly and hopefully addressing some of these shortcuts.
And be aware, there's a cameraman trying to track you.
Okay, good, okay. So this is the way we're gonna kind of lay out the plots here. You can see they're gonna be ten by forty, a little bit different than when we originally planned. We had planned, we're actually twenty by twenties, but to work them into this space, we thought ten by forty was gonna be more appropriate. We've done our research, and our research shows a, a basic plot for a lot of community gardens around the area is about a twenty by twenty. Now, we've learned a lot with community meetings. One of the things that was brought up to us for our attention was there are people interested in smaller plots. So keeping that in mind, you can see that we've taken some of these plots and made them smaller. Okay? Uh, we basically started off with eighteen plots, ten by forty, now I think we're up to twenty-five total. That number may change, because right now, we're, we're opening up for people to apply for community gardens, and what we're finding out is the majority of people applying want small plots. So this may change a little, but we may reduce the number of large plots, plots, just to get more people to count for here. So that's how it's gonna be laid out. Now, let me show you. Let's see here. There we go. Okay, I'm actually, all right now. If you can take, well, this is Sligo Overlook Park right here, this green space here, and I kind of want to walk you through this, see if I can do this, and still have you see this, and let you know what we plan on doing. Um, you can see that plots are gonna run down this way, right? Out in this major area right here, they're gonna be closest to the street. We are gonna have green space up around in here, and we intend on putting a seating area up in there, we tend to landscape it with, uh, blueberries, with fruit plants, not shade trees or anything like that, we're trying to keep as a theme. So we're hoping to do that up in this area, maybe this is green space down here, this will all be garden plots. When we set out looking at community gardens, we did have some criteria, and one of the criteria we had was to put a key up in every community garden, just for information purposes, so we're gonna have that down here... So, we're going to have that down here at the beginning of the community garden. We also wanted a lot of participation by the community. And thanks to Ben's efforts and Valerie's efforts, we're going to be doing that. We're going to be working with the towns of Sligo. They're looking at great money to put in a rain garden, which will be down at this end of the garden. We're also working with a couple of different boy scouts for different projects as well, and so we're kind of working that out. Each site comes with different challenges. This is no, there's no exception with this one. If you're familiar, this site has slopes quite a bit, okay? So, we're going to have to deal with that. And we're keeping that in mind when we till out the ground up there. That's one reason, again, for putting the rain garden down at this end. We also have some challenges with a number of trees. The trees along the street right here, we've been working with Tacoma Park Urban Forester, Arborum Foresters, and Topps and Yerben Forester, and we will probably be removing about five or six trees along the street here. They're a little bit unhealthy, hazardous. So, we're hoping to remove the trees along the street. We're going to be replacing those trees as we do the removals. We also have two trees up on site. One of them, excuse me, one of them is a walnut tree. And we're going to be removing that. The walnut tree is giving us problems with toxicity, with juglone, so we're going to be removing that as well. Any questions about the site at all?
If you, the black walnut that you're talking about, just point to that on there.
That is up right about there. Can you see that?
Right in the middle of the property.
Right in the middle of the property.
It's on the bluff.
It's on the slope, but the roots come down into the garden area.
I've got some concerns about that, so I want to make sure we have that conversation.
Just, why don't you go ahead and finish talking about everything, then we know.
Last point I want to make is that we do have guidelines for this as well, too. The guidelines, the garden is going to be organic, it's going to be a no-smoking area. We're going to be there to oversee the area. We're not just plowing the plots and letting them go. We're going to be overseeing the area. We have parameters on what people can put in the plots, as far as fencing material, heights of things. We have height restrictions on the trellises and different things like that. We want to make this community garden as aesthetically pleasing as possible. There's a lot of concerns about community gardens out there being on site. We want to try to kind of try to put those to rest a little bit. Other than that, we're going to have at each site a volunteer coordinator, which will be helping us oversee the plots. With the volunteer coordinator, we hope to give them, thank you very much. I just came back from vacation, so.
Welcome back. I hope you had a good time.
It was nice, too nice a time. Oh, thank you very much. Guidelines. Again, we're in it to stay. We're not just going to plow the plots, walk away, come back next year. We're going to be working throughout the year with the individuals. We're going to be having seminars. We're going to be working with the University of Maryland Extension. We're probably going to have seed exchanges, different things like that. We're going to be active on site. We're not going to be absentee landlords, to use a term like that. We're going to be active out there on site the whole time, so any questions at all?
I'll just, go ahead.
If I could, real quick, I just, tonight is the eighth of the nine meetings we've attended. And in addition to the Pinecrest Residents Association, we've also met with the Environmental Committee, I guess of the city, I'm not familiar with the exact name, to present to them the sites and get their feedback. There was concern raised by the Chair of that committee for the walnut tree in particular. She, the individual, Ms. Tunis, raised the same concern at the Pinecrest Association meeting, where the Parks Department did say they would look into what options, if any, were available for retaining the tree and allowing the plots to go forward. And I think David can speak to that more specifically, but I just wanted you to be aware that it was raised. Parks looked into it, and I'll let him address, you know, what they found.
Yeah, let me kind of address that. There are actually two walnut trees on the site. One is about maybe fifteen feet in back of the front one. And we looked at every which way to try to save the tree up front. We have a number of certified arborists on staff, and I had two of them go out to the site and evaluate the trees on site. The walnut tree, we looked at possibly taking off the roots that come down into the garden to try to save the tree that way. And our certified arborist determined that by taking off the roots, it would make the tree unstable, so we couldn't save the tree that way. We've talked to University of Maryland Extension people about the walnut being close proximity to the garden, and they highly recommended getting the walnut tree out. For the garden to be successful, that tree needs to be removed.
First, I just wanted to say that for me, having a, knowing a long history of the city working with park and planning, I'll just say that we really welcome this opportunity for park and planning to have a larger presence in our community. And it's really exciting to have the pilot for the community gardens coming to Tacoma Park. And I hope that this will just augur well for the rest of the county having opportunities like this. And I think this is a real timely program that Councilmember Irvin has pushed forward. And I think we all look forward to the partnership and the future of this project, because I think there's going to be a lot of interest and a lot of excitement about it. And I like all of the various pieces that you're proposing to bring to it. So, thank you. Councilmember Robinson, you have questions about the walnut?
I've got a couple of things. I also am very glad that this garden is coming in. It's near New Hampshire Avenue. It's in an enterprise zone in that area of our city, and it's in the Pinecrest Neighborhood Association, which is the newest member of our Tacoma Park. It came in, was unincorporated before it entered into Tacoma Park not so long ago. That's the Committee on the Environment. We all get it mixed up from time to time, but...
I've got my own list of eighty some lines.
Yeah, I'm sure you have a few, a few things to remember. It's the, our Committee on the Environment. And Catherine Tunis is here. She's sitting, she's sitting with us in the audience. And she sent a memo around today, which I have in front of me. And we've kicked around this notion of the tree, and from what Catherine says, there are conflicting opinions about how far this juglone, which is, I think, the name of the toxic substance which is generated by a black walnut, how far it moves from the roots, or whether it's soluble, and whether it can be kind of stopped with mulch and that kind of thing. And the distance between the trunk of that tree on the top of the higher part and the lower part, where I would anticipate the gardens would go, having measured it off a little bit, is quite a ways. It's, you know, thirty feet, something like that, thirty, forty feet. So, I don't, I'm not sure how far the root system does go down, but it's quite a stretch between that tree and where the end of the plots would be. And a couple of the, a couple of the ideas that came across in our memo was putting a little retaining wall in there to, and then filling the top part of the retaining wall with mulch, so that that, so that the juglone that was there, if there is juglone there, would be stopped or absorbed by the mulch. Because it's far enough away, in my reading of this, there's some question as to whether it really will affect the vegetable gardens. And that's what we're talking about, is whether it'll affect the vegetable gardens. And, and we kicked around a little bit, well, how about getting a jump on it, planting some, some extra trees up top there, because that's what we're talking about, and leaving the black walnut there for a year and seeing if it does have this effect. And if it doesn't, good, we save it, and it saves the cost of bringing it down and so forth. And if it does affect it, then that's a, that's a problem for you, because you have to put up with the folks who have the gardens in that, in that area, and they're complaining because their vegetables didn't grow as well as their neighbors' vegetables, and certainly that's an issue. But it is a big tree. It looks like it's fifty years old at least. Not? Okay, okay, it's a big tree. I'm no arborist, you can certainly tell that. But we're interested, the neighborhood's interested in saving it, certainly our Committee on the Environment is interested in saving it. If there is a difference of opinion, it would be nice to know why, or it'd be nice to give ourselves some leeway so that we could kind of test, test that.
Yeah, just to add a couple of things on what you said from the memo and your observation, it's not just the roots, it's also the leaves, too. So, when the leaves fall in the fall, we will have that problem throughout the garden, wherever the leaves go. As far as the tree being thirty feet away, it's more like about fifteen or twenty. And there's one main root that comes right down that into the garden area. As far as a retaining wall, by putting a retaining wall, we're going to have to get rid of that one main root. And it will make the tree unstable, and that's a liability for us that we're not willing to take on that.
Okay, I'm going to switch, I'm going to leave that at that point, and we can talk about it more. And I'm going to switch just briefly to your comment about some fruiting blueberries on the top section. And that's very much appreciated. We had also discussed a little bit with Ursula, I think, at the meeting, with, at the Committee on the Environment, as the five trees along Orchard are removed and then replaced, if those could also be, if those could also be fruiting trees, it would, it's on Orchard Avenue, right? It's on Orchard Avenue. Ostensibly, that was an orchard, a fruit orchard. And in fact, there's still a, an Asian pear, a big Asian pear on the top and another big Asian pear down below. Don't know if those were initially planted as part of the orchard or whatever, but it would, I think it would serve us all well to have fruit trees along Orchard Avenue. They don't necessarily have to be street trees, maybe they're not designated as street trees. But I think that there's a decent right of way there, and according to the plots that you've got drawn out, there's, looks like there's enough room to push them back. There would not be an issue with shade. And, and I think Ursula told me in an email today that you guys are considering putting dwarf fruiting trees. So, I applaud you for that and hope that that's what comes to pass along that section.
Right, and going back to your comments about fruiting trees and bushes, we're trying to work out those details now, but what, that's one of the parameters we set from the very beginning, that if we were going to use plants for landscaping, we wanted to keep that theme and do fruits. And we've talked today about figs possibly using that.
Yes.
Again, it's just something for the neighborhood to grasp on to, to take care of, to harvest from it, from, and it keeps that, that whole thing going. Now, in relation, in talking about the street trees underneath the power lines, I talked to Ursula about that today. She really, I just got back today from vacation, so she relayed everything for the last couple weeks that's been to me. And I think her original thoughts and our urban foresters' thoughts on that were, it was that if we plant a fruit tree along the streets, that there would be problems with the fruit landing on our cars, it'd be a little messy and all that. They brought up all these points to me. And the conversation I had today, I told Ursula that we have an opportunity here, a couple of opportunities here. One, we're horticulturists, and we've already set our theme about trying to put, you know, stick with fruit trees. We should stick with that, number one. Number two is, we've got an opportunity here to do a little teaching to people, and that is with the power lines. There's a tremendous problem in the county and the nation with trees, the wrong trees being planted underneath power lines. Here is an opportunity to come back in and demonstrate that by using possibly dwarf fruit trees. If we use dwarf fruit trees, it kind of solves a lot of problems. They're not high, so they're not going to hurt the cars.
Now, we're not talking about trees, this...
No, we're not talking, we're talking about eight-foot, ten-foot trees. They're going to stay underneath the power lines, they're going to be easy for people to take care of, for one thing. And again, if we choose the right cultivars and everything, they're disease resistant, we don't have to do any spraying or anything like that. So, it's a great opportunity. That's what the conversation went to today.
Great.
So, I think it's doable with the fruit trees underneath, and it's just going to enhance that area a little bit.
Oh, yeah. So... Well, thank you for your good words.
Getting back to the walnut tree, if I could get a copy of that note to respond to those things and let you know from our point of view, the information that we found out. We've been, again, talking to people around the area, University of Maryland, West Virginia University, people in the field that have done all the research on walnut trees and everything. And again, let me just reiterate that according to our research and everything that we've found and people that we've talked to, again, we want to make this garden successful right out of the gates. We're trying to lessen the problems as we go through this. It's a challenge. I mean, it's a great site, but there's challenges that we're finding almost daily that are coming up. And the more work we do up front, the more successful these gardens are going to be. And I think for the people that are going to be having these garden plots, we owe it to them to try to set it up the right way. And by leaving the walnut tree poses some issues and some problems that I cannot guarantee. And I don't think anybody can guarantee there won't be, if we do that work. It's an unfortunate thing that we have to take down a tree, it really is, but it's a necessity at this point.
I mean, I would just add, I mean, we're not, I mean, we're going to defer to the council members and the mayor, and, you know, if you guys want to have a discussion with Parks, I mean, the one thing that I will say is that the conversations that we've had is that we would hate to put in all the resources, human and physical, that we have to date and going forward, and also people's personal time to come out and work the sites for them not to be successful with an issue that we have identified early on, which may or may not be able to be addressed. So, I would just put that out there in terms of perspective. We're trying our best to preserve or replace with more than what is currently there. And for the number of plots, for the number of interested applicants, we want to try and do the best for all of those folks who have expressed their interest, so.
Councilmember Wright, but before you say anything, I just want to make sure that everybody kind of looked in here once or twice like, ooh, what is that noise? What's going on? My assumption is that was rain. If it wasn't, it would be interesting to know. We do have a really noisy air handler in here, but it doesn't run, which is why it's kind of still hot in here, so. Councilmember Wright?
I just wanted to check, the city arborist has an agreement that we should remove the walnut tree as well, is that correct, or?
That I don't know.
Well, can I help you maybe with a question? The walnut tree is on park property, the street trees are on Tacoma Park right away. So, the park has authority over jurisdiction on that tree.
Yeah, yeah, I was just curious about whether, because it sounded like you'd talked to the city arborist, and, and I was just curious if he, in his professional opinion, it also seemed to make sense to, based on what he knew and what you were talking about to remove the walnut tree.
In regards to the walnut, I cannot tell you off the top of my head that they've talked about the walnut. I know they've talked about the other trees on Tacoma Park right away.
Yeah.
But I would, I do not think they've talked about the walnut.
And then I just want to say a big thank you to Ben and Valerie. I know that this has been, at times, an arduous process. I think that you're commended for both trying to do something quickly, put an ear out there and move quickly, which is rare for any level of government to do. But at the same time, you also, this is a good example of, you know, the fifty-fifty situation of the percentage that are going forward in terms of the proposed pilots. You also listened around Silver Spring International. I take some of the fault for the, what happened there, because I, my reading of the community was that people would likely be supportive of a community garden, not knowing exactly the, you know, would they be supportive of this exact place within the park or not. And I think there was a lot of, as there often is in Tacoma Park, a lot of differing opinions. And I commend you all for stepping back and saying, let's talk about this more, let's look at other sites. And I think tomorrow night, you have your last of your nine meetings at the college at seven PM, in a, I think on the third floor, somewhere three-thirty or three-oh-three. So, I encourage people to come out and have a discussion with, with us. I'll be there.
We hope to see you there, yes.
Yes, I'll definitely be there, and I look forward to that discussion. You know, I think it is, we're kind of talked a lot about this walnut tree, and I'm not an arborist either, but I do, would generally defer to the arborist and also keep in perspective that overall, the city of Tacoma Park has an incredible policy and approach with, with its urban forest. And in aggregate, we're trying to increase the number of trees in, in the urban forest. And, and I would hate to see this one tree slow down or cause the, the community garden to be less successful than it could be. And I think we have to remember that this is a pilot site, and so we want to do as few things as possible that would in any way inhibit from being super successful, because people will look at this site and, and judge it and say, do I want something like that in my community, in my block, in my neighborhood in the future? So, I think we have to, we have to be aware of that larger perspective. And there's environmental benefits to having a tree, but there's also environmental benefits to having a successful community garden and multiple successful community gardens around the Down County area.
Councilmember Wright, if I could, I mean, the varying opinions that we heard at the Silver Spring Intermediate Park meeting, I, I would, I would say that the majority were still favorable for community gardens, just that the location that was selected might not be the right one for that area.
Yeah.
So I still think there's opportunities that folks would be interested in. And, you know, your, your support, the whole council's support and the mayor's support has been great. And it has been exciting to actually go from thought in residents' mind, minds at a couple of community meetings to an actual program in less than six months. So hopefully, we can see it through.
Councilwoman Siemens.
Thank you, Mayor. And in the interest of time, I'm not going to cover ground that's already been covered. I do want to just thank Valerie Urban again, council member, for her leadership in bringing this to fruition. And certainly, your, your work on this is, has been excellent. I'm, I'm council member for many low-income residents of Tacoma Park, and so I am excited that they're going to have an opportunity that they've talked to me about in the past of having someplace that they can grow their own vegetables and maybe help their own income, not in selling it, but not in deferring their expenses. You mentioned that this would be available for renters and property owners with small properties. Are you going to give preference, a preference to tenants?
That's one thing I didn't go over is how these were going to be distributed, the lottery that we've advertised. We've just recently advertised the lottery, and I do have some platters that brought with me tonight that I'll leave for you to kind of see. But we're charging forty-five dollars per plot. That's for a large plot, or twenty-five dollars for the smaller plot. The lottery system that we're starting, we've already gotten over fifty applications for the lottery. The, the garden plots will be chosen, the ratio we've set up, we want most of the plots to go to the community, the immediate community. So it's going to be kind of an eighty, twenty, or seventy, thirty kind of ratio at the beginning that we're going to choose out.
And how do you consider immediate?
We're working with council member Robinson, kind of setting up the parameter. He has suggested a half-mile radius up to a mile radius for immediate community.
He and I will talk. You, you mentioned, you mentioned fences. One of the problems I know with some community gardens is that unfenced properties have more poachers, if you will. And I, are you going to allow, are you going to erect a fence around the entire garden? Or are you going to allow fences around individual plots?
I think, as I mentioned during my presentation, this is going to be a work in progress for a number of different reasons. One is we're kind of learning about the site. We're getting input from, every time we have a meeting, we learn something. But also, funding-wise, I was given this project with zero money.
Sorry about that.
That came from Parks, too. Now, you can, this is your no funding. So we've been trying to scrape and squeeze things out from, from budgets that we have. I've been looking for, trying to fit things into our system. The fence was brought up at a community meeting. We had made some assumptions with this site that there was no deer problems. So I figured maybe we could get by without a fence. And when we went to the committee meeting, everybody was, oh, there's deer in the neighborhood. So we had to rethink that. In doing our research about fences, there's a lot of places that have fences, there's a lot of places that wouldn't have fences. There are, there is, there's always going to be poaching on community gardens, simply for the fact, because they're on open space, nobody's there throughout the night. Even with fences, people climb fences. If they're hungry, if they want the vegetables, they will find a way of getting them. When fences are erected, they do take care of deer. That's probably one of the main reasons fences are put up for the entire garden is for deer. We will allow people, at the moment, that for the time being, to put up individual fences on their plot. We do have, like I said, restrictions on what goes up. We do not want construction fencing to go up. We want to make sure that it's wire fencing. It shouldn't be any higher than six feet, because again, anything grown on six feet is going to cause shade for the next, for the neighbors. We're considering, you know, each plot as a neighbor. It will be a work in progress.
And you don't want to hurt the deer when they jump over.
We don't want to hurt the deer when they jump over. It will be a work in progress. We're looking for money for a fence right now. We visited a community garden over in, off of, in Riverdale a couple of weeks ago. They had a great fence, very cheap fence, very attractive fence. We're looking at putting up something like that, but I've got to find the funding. We're working with Paul Brenier. Paul said he may have some funding from Tacoma Park available. So it's not out of the question yet, but it's just going to be a work in progress.
Well, I thank you. And in the interest of time, I'll stop with my questions. I would just like to encourage any renters along Maple Avenue and Lee Avenue and my ward to contact me if they're interested in a garden plot. They can reach me at three oh one, five six five, oh one nine oh. Thank you.
And I'll, I'll just say in conclusion that I tend to agree with councilmember Wright's thoughts in terms of kind of balancing of various environmental concerns, particularly about the black walnut. And want to make sure that this project is successful and leads to other successful projects. And look to you all to work out the best in balancing all of the various things that you talk about, both in terms of how you do it and how you come up with the money and partners and everything else. And I applaud all your efforts in bringing this forward and look forward to successful implementation.
Thank you.
Thanks very much, guys.
Thank you. Thank you. Thanks for watching.
And we'll take a short break. So that the people who are here for that can go home.
Oh, I thought you meant the people for the other works can stay longer.
Hopefully, it'll be a short discussion and it won't really affect the people here for public works. Had a discussion with councilmember Leventhal last week, and it was, he's putting together some information for his county council colleagues to solicit their support for this item, for the council grants process or to get it into the budget, however they see best to do it. And he said that, he asked if we had any money in our budget that would be some token contribution toward this. And I said that we didn't, but that we could discuss it. So we're doing that tonight so that he can reflect the results of our discussion this evening in whatever he shares with his colleagues, rather than saying the council is going to discuss it in the future and then have to kind of go, go out with a whole nother memo about status of things. And so my discussion with, with him had been some amount from the city on the order of five or ten thousand dollars would go a long way toward making it easier for the county council to come up with their share of the, what's the figure now, councilmember Siemens, ninety-something?
Ninety-three thousand, five hundred and sixty dollars.
Okay. So does anybody have any thoughts, comments about this, councilmember Siemens?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not enthusiastic about adding money for the operations to pool. I think the, the county typically pays for the operations of pools throughout the county. I do think there are some extenuating circumstances, though, with the Piney Ranch Pool, and that the Recreation Department had decided to cease operations of this pool because it did not have a configuration that they felt was going to allow it to meet the fiscal parameters that they have for all their other pools in the county. And so for that reason, I would certainly support, I mean, this is an important resource to the community. As Ms. Cass Miller said earlier tonight, there's over four hundred swimmers a month at this point, and it's only after two months of operation. Usage is expected to continue to build. We have four hundred and fifty schoolchildren that have used the pool now for four weeks, and will be using it for additional weeks before it closes at the end of this fiscal year. So I, I think, you know, there's no doubt that it is a fantastic resource for the community. And I think it behooves us to demonstrate to the county council our enthusiastic support for the pool. And so I would like to move that we do provide ten thousand dollars for the operation for next year.
Other comments? Councilmember Wright?
I, I don't want this to be precedent-setting, so I would hope that when the county is in better financial situation, economics are better, this would be relooked at. You know, I, I would ask the rhetorical question if people near the Martin Luther King Swimming Facility pay any extra fee for having the pool in their community? And I think the answer to that rhetorical question, since it's rhetorical, would be no. So I, I feel very conflicted, because on principle, I think that it's the wrong thing for the, for the county to come to the city to ask us to pay this, particularly at the same time when you hear that bridges, which are used by many, many people outside of the city, are, you know, they're, they're not giving us funding, stimulus funding to help repair those bridges. I find it very troubling and problematic. But I also realize that there's a lot of kids in particular who are using the pool, both in the school and, and outside of the school, and want to see that continue. And feel like we've just started with the pool and don't want to see it stop before we really see what its potential can be. And also, I know that councilmember Leventhal has made great efforts to make this happen and want to be supportive of his efforts of the Tacoma Park residents. So I would support councilmember Siemens' proposal, but begrudgingly.
Councilman Williams.
I also support that proposal. I'll use the entrepreneurial investment kind of words, and it's an investment in our own community. And I hope that as we go forward, we can, I know that, that, that investment pays for itself and the pleasure of the kids and our own constituents here, people in Tacoma Park and outside of Tacoma Park. And I'd like to keep that pool here. So, thanks for taking on some of the burden, and we'll take on some of the burden ourselves if this goes this way.
And I'm also supportive of that proposal. I would hearken back in a slightly different way to the earlier example of the potential funding for bridges in the city from the county. I think a lot of what we try to do and need to do with the county is work out the proper alignment of each entity in partnerships and understand the financial abilities and relative size of the county and the city and the relative ability to do things. And I think as we deal with shifting priorities and different senses of priorities, that we, we attempt to come together with some compromises that don't always make us the happiest in all the things, but in the long run are the best way to go forward. And I think this is an instance where I agree, the principle of it, I don't think that we should be putting money toward funding the operation of the pool, but given the situation we're in and where we need to go, I think it's the best thing that we need to do. And so it sounds like we have unanimity of those of us here tonight. And so it sounds like the message that we can send back to county council is that we're supportive and that we will put, we will find ten thousand in our budget that isn't in there as we continue those discussions and make that commitment. So, thank you, and we'll see where things go from here.
And thanks for staying so late.
Next item is the Budget Work Session on Public Works. And Director of Public Works is here, and I'm assuming you're going to do Public Works first and then Stormwater. And if you want to present what you ever, whatever you want to present, and then we'll go with questions and observations from the council.
Okay, great, thanks. You have before you the information that we prepared in the packet, as well as a list of highlights and items in which we reviewed the Public Works Department budget with an eye towards enhancing and meeting the strategic plan that the council has presented. I'll, I'll save reading through the list in interest of time. And any specific questions you have, I'd be happy to follow up on. Basically, the budget that we've presented for Public Works this year is pretty much kind of a balanced budget, stay the course. There are new programs and new ways of doing things that we're going to address. However, they're on a fairly modest scale, given the staff levels and the amount of fixed expenses that we have. As you see in the information, our budget is a little more than four million dollars. Fifty-seven percent of that is personnel-related. Many of the other expenses that are, are carried in the Public Works budget are, I guess what you could call fixed, or are beyond the Public Works mission itself. All utility costs for city buildings, city streetlights, as well as water and, and heating are carried in the Public Works Department budget. All fuel costs related to any city vehicle is carried in the Public Works Department budget. All repair costs for vehicles. So a lot of the expenses that are in the Public Works budget reflect programs throughout the city government. That being said, it just means that we have a little, little less flexibility and some fairly significant costs that are, are wrapped up in those types of programs. We have eight departments within the Public Works Department itself. I'm sure you're all familiar with them. In looking at the council's strategic plan, what myself and my staff have tried to do is put together programs that reinforce the strategic plan, as well as remind both the city residents as well as council about the existing environmental programs that are already underway and have longstanding history within the city and, and that meet those strategic goals. And we're talking about our recycling program, our tree preservation and tree planting program, our street sweeping program, garden and maintenance program, all those things that enhance sustainability, livability. And probably as much as the police department, the public work staff are in the public eye day-to-day, I think most city residents probably see someone within the Public Works Department every day. If you drive through the city, you see the guys on the trash truck, you see the guys in, you know, soon mowing the, the playgrounds and gardens and, and parks. You see the folks driving the, the street sweeper. So the interface opportunities that we have with the public are fairly large, because what we do is field work, and so we're out in the field, and the field is the city. That said, I, I didn't have anything else prepared beyond what I provided in the, in the documents that you have in front of you this evening, and would be happy to answer any questions.
Yeah, first, let me say that the information that you provided in the, in the packet this evening was very helpful to me in understanding some of the highlights. And I just had a couple of quick questions or observations on that material. One thing was, at the very end of, I guess it would be page three of the blue sheet, except it's on a white sheet. The, the very last part talks about the city elected to provide solid waste collection services, a core service funded out of general operating revenues in many communities, as services provided on a user-fee basis, either by city employees or through the use of an outside contractor. And my thought when I saw that was, if we were to consider changing, it would be, I would assume, to shift costs. And it, and I'm, and I'm thinking, what would, do you have a sense of what reason there might be to shift costs? Somebody's costs would go up and somebody's would go down. And my sense is that it would probably be that, like with the stormwater fee, the design was for the costs for the single-family homeowner to go down. Who would get the, who, where would those costs shift to?
Well, with the, kind of have the opposite issue with refuse collection recycling program, which I would see together as a whole, not just the trash pickup utility fee, but a program that encompasses them all. What we have now is all costs of the solid waste recycling program are borne by every taxpayer, be it business, private entity, multifamily apartment unit, as well as the single-family households. However, the service we provide is very specifically geared towards the single-family households and the small apartment units, twelve units and less, and apartment owner has the option of going for city service or contracting out based on what works best for their, for their building and for their tenants. The city does have a fee that it charges apartment owners for per-unit collection after the first unit. So for instance, if you have a six-unit building, you're paying for five units. It's assumed that the first It's assumed that the first unit is covered in your tax rate that you pay relative to the city. So if we were to take a look at a utility fee of sorts for solid waste collection, what you'd be doing is taking those costs that are now borne by the tax base as a whole and itemizing them, being a cost center for them, and basically charging all of those people that benefit from that program. So it would be the single-family property owners, as well as the multifamily owners that elect to use that collection service. The aspect of our program that is beyond that is we do collect from quite a few street-side containers, so we'd have to figure out how to absorb those costs. But in and of themselves, they're a fairly small percentage of what a truck or a crew are doing on a day-to-day basis, though we do provide three times a week pickup for our street-side cans and containers and playground and park containers. So it would be a little bit opposite to the stormwater fee, which was trying to get at those non-taxpayers, the institutions that don't pay taxes, and being able to share the cost of the stormwater utility fee in that. It would be, kind of the flip side of that, it would be removing costs from all the taxpayers and focusing in a user-based type of program.
I didn't necessarily want to go there, but I thought, well, if we even wanted to have the conversation, there would be some basis for understanding why we would even want to go there, and that was helpful. And I just had a couple other quick observations. The question came up earlier, and I didn't know if you had anything else that you might add, I'm not sure you were here at the beginning, about the potential for increasing the percentage of energy that the city purchases from wind power. I see where it includes funding to go to 50%, but kind of the status of where things are on that.
We're currently waiting to hear from the county. They just recently had their bid for all power providers that they're currently contracting with, and wind power is a portion of that. I had expected to hear by now in terms of the actual price bid, but haven't yet, and I'll be back in touch with the county's office that orchestrates that. Basically, the way our wind power purchase works is we get a bill once a year for the equivalent amount of wind power, the add-on additional cost of wind power above and beyond the base rate fee. So it's a fairly simple matter in terms of how it's managed for us.
And have you had any sense that that operating assumption might change in any current environment so that the premium that we pay for that might disappear or be significantly reduced?
That's not the information I'd gotten from the county up till now. I think they were awaiting their, you know, bid process to see what kind of prices they were going to get back. Because the county has been competitively awarding their electricity in particular purchases for now probably greater than five years, they're at a fairly competitive rate. So it's not the same as a general person in the community that calls Pepco or Washington Gas Energy Services and said, what's the best rate you can give me? Because they're dealing with such a large pool, they've been able to command a fairly significant price reduction and very competitive price. So in that way, the amount that we have to pay for wind power is going to exceed what we're currently paying for our base rate electricity, simply because we're in a very large buying pool.
And a question about, at one point here, you talked about refurbishment of Memorial Park, and I thought, I know most of the parks, I'm not sure where, I know where Memorial Park is, unless it's one directly across the street.
Yeah, right, right across the street. It's one that's, you know, a lot of the plants and shrubs have outgrown their spaces. It's in need of restoration, refurbishment. I think a lot of people aren't even aware there's a, you know, a fairly significant marble piece in that park. So the idea, and I think it was actually brought to us through Diane Cohen a year or so ago, was to take a look at that and figure out what we could do to enhance and kind of refresh that space.
And the item about improving the quality of work performed on city right-of-way by utility companies, and there's one phrase in here about, in the past, utility companies have ignored city requirements and not provided restoration. And I was wondering, it might be helpful for us to understand a little bit more about some of the history. I know that we've all been focusing on what's been going on with WSSC and how that relationship with the city has been changing and is continuing to change, and what types of agreements we have been developing with them. But we don't need to do it tonight, but any quick, easy sense of kind of where we are on that? Because the question that came to mind for me was whether continuing to try and change the, our ability to get the kind of response from the utilities toward what we need for our right-of-way should best be dealt with at a staff level, or whether there's a political solution, or giving us a little bit better sense of where we might need to go with that.
I wish I had a crystal ball to figure the answer to that. Historically, it seems that there are certainly times when it's been absolutely necessary to have a political player amidst the negotiation as a way to sort of get it square front and center on the radar of the utility company that we're currently doing battle with. The day-to-day, week-to-week, month-to-month type work, however, isn't benefited at all by, you know, sort of the political aspect of that. And what we really need is a strong working relationship with our counterparts, that the utility company that we know on a direct and first-name basis, and that we can hold each other accountable for notifying us of work. Unfortunately, what we see is what we're seeing right now with WSSC, sort of the ebb and fall of that. Now, you know, I get a phone call from the WSSC folks if they're, you know, kind of just driving through. And I know that's going to be a short-lived experience. It's enjoyable while it lasts, but what we need to figure out is what we can do to position ourselves, not with WSSC, because they are sort of above the law in a lot of ways, but with the other utility companies that have created problems, Washington Gas in particular, Pepco much more, less so. So that as a primary point, they're restoring and refurbishing the areas that they excavate in effect within a timely manner. There's, you know, at this point, we're at six and eight months out, and they still haven't, you know, put permanent patch in a hole that they cut, and that's just an unreasonable level of service. Whether or not it's a bond, whether or not it's a, you know, some kind of pre-negotiated agreement where we hold them to a pretty strict standard in terms of restoration. If they don't meet a certain timeframe, then we're going to do it and bill them. You know, at this point, the city attorney's office really needs to take a look at what powers we have at our disposal and sort of where we can ante up.
And the thought occurs to me that what we might want to consider is at least think about the possibility of whether we need to take any of those concerns to our state delegation, or to the Maryland Municipal League, or to the Montgomery and/or Prince George's County delegations as part of a by-county bill. There was some discussion here Thursday night at the joint Montgomery-Prince George's meeting about possibly some joint legislative priorities on by-county bills and the process of vetting those, and it takes the whole process earlier. And people were looking at a meeting about that in June at the MML convention. So almost even before we get into the next fiscal year, we may need a sense of whether we want to go that route with any of these. So any advice you can give us in the next, what, two months would be very helpful. And then just a final question about the street restoration program. And you talk a little bit about streets identified in the 2004 study and being taken care of by end of fiscal year 11, and then reevaluating all the surfaces. And I just want to make sure I understand that the way this operates is that every so many years, you reevaluate the whole database rather than ongoing reevaluation as, you know, a fiscal year's worth or a two-years' worth gets done, or an event triggering some kind of checking the databases? Is it essentially that it's a lot of work and some money to redo it and test it all, and you'd rather just do it all at once?
Well, yes, kind of bit of a work in process. When we first talked about this program, it was when the council was considering bonding for a large sum of money to catch us up in terms of where we were with street conditions. At that point, we talked about doing an annual review. The reality, the situation is, we had a set amount of funds, we had a set amount of street, we know exactly where we're going, and the program work that we did on the front end of this was such that we've been able to pretty much stick to what we said we were going to do back in 2004 and 2005. Here in 2009, those streets that we said we were going to be getting to in 2009 and 2010 are indeed the ones that we're doing. So I feel quite good about the level of detail and the level of work that we did advancing this program. We pretty much came up with the program, and it's been evolving, just like we assumed it would. There's been a few glitches and bumps in the road, largely utility-related, where we've had to move some things around based on progress or no progress on the part of the utility company work.
Literally bumps in the road.
Yeah, literally. But what that translated for is, while we know we have funding and we know what streets we're going to be addressing, it really didn't make sense to go out and do a pavement condition index report, which is a literally very time-intensive process where you walk the streets with a, you know, map and formula, and you're calculating linear feet of alligator cracks, how many longitudinal cracks. I mean, you're basically really giving the street a once-over. It didn't make sense to collect that information on an annual basis when we knew we weren't going to be able to use that information until 2012. Some of the things that the public may not be aware, but when the city created that bonding program and created the street restoration program as it was in 2005, the council set a goal of spending $500,000 a year for street restoration as what we needed to keep on a 20-year cycle from that point out. I still think that that is going to be the appropriate amount of funds for that. What the city has done for the first five to seven years, I can't remember now exactly, is use part of that money to pay for, pay the interest and cost of the loan. And the remainder money has been used to address the streets. And so that's the funding level that we're going to in 2012. We'll be, for the first time since we started this program, at the $500,000 level for street expenditures directly over the course of that fiscal year. Up till now, we've been paying, the major portion of the money has been used to pay the loan back. What we've had is $150,000 to $180,000 a year outside the loan to do street restoration work. So come 2012, we'll have $500,000, and we'll absolutely need to have done a full evaluation of the existing streets, just like we did in 2004, complete with pavement condition reports and some real detailed information about the level of condition of the streets, and put them into a program that basically will give people a pretty good sense of how far out their street restoration might be.
So it sounds like your sense is, at least to this point, we're not going to have to rethink the, by many orders of magnitude, the level that we've been funding, that the budget assumptions for that particular item seem to be good with what we've been doing? Because I know that we've been through two or three iterations of evaluation and what we think it's going to take to get a 15-year program or a 20-year program. And I think last time we were talking, gee, at the levels that was funded before, it was going to be a 30-year program. And so, and I think it even started with like $100,000 a year, and we're at 500, and it seems like that's going to work.
Yeah, I do believe so.
So that's helpful for understanding kind of the long-term implications of the budget on a pretty significant item.
Part of, another part of what we did with the level of funding that was put into this program from 2005 on was, there were some streets that rather than just simply mill and overlay, we actually reconstructed the street. We went down six to eight inches and rebuilt the street. That's a street that's going to have a long life versus had we just milled and paved, that that street would have probably failed within 10 to 15 years. So we sort of bit the bullet, so to speak, and spent the funds upfront to try to ensure that our streets have the longer life that we're in this case.
And that's my, that's my area of concern, is that we did it on the streets that were upcoming, but we didn't do it on the streets that had most recently been done. And that next iteration will give us that sense of kind of what other baggage we still have to deal with in that area.
Yeah. The street study included coring as well, so we've got not only surface condition, but also actual profile of the street itself. We know which streets don't have base.
Questions?
Councilmember Seaman.
Thank you. Thank you for being here with us tonight at this hour. Appreciate it. I had two things. One, you talked a little bit about the many things that your department does that are really functions for other departments, such as the fuel expenses, the repairs of vehicles and things like that. And this is more not really a question, but a suggestion for the city manager, or a request. And I wonder if, I think for future planning purposes, it would be very helpful if we started to do the accounting breakdown so that we can track those expenses for the particular business areas where they're incurred. Because I think as the council has talked about trying to evaluate different programs and determining whether we can make cost savings in those areas, it's very difficult to do when some of the larger expenses, such as vehicle maintenance, are lumped together.
We actually talked about that during kind of our budget prep with Darrell, and one of the things that we discussed, if we were to do anything on the vehicle side, truthfully, other than Public Works, almost all the vehicles are police. We were still crunching numbers. Darrell was going to wait till she had a little bit more information towards the end of this fiscal year, but we had talked about actually modifying the Public Works and the Police Department budget to basically show all the cost of fuel and repairs to police vehicles and actually transfer those expenses to the Police Department so that the council and the community had a better idea of what it's actually costing to have our Police Department.
Yeah.
We were just hoping to get a little bit more accurate data before we did that.
And I think, you know, there are other departments, like Recreation Department, that if we were to do something, we ought to do it across the board so that as things change through the years to come, we would have an accounting system that would support those changes. And then I had a question about, you know, one thing that we didn't talk about tonight because you've just recently talked with the council about it, and that's the renovation of the Public Works facility. And I was curious what, if you had any feel for what, well, you must have at this point, what your plans are for the solid waste division as far as renovations? What percentage of the renovation really is focused on the work of solid waste?
We're not anywhere near that level of detail yet. Basically, what we're hoping to have done with the hiring of the architectural firm, one of the things that they discussed with us doing is basically evaluating our operation. They've spent a day or more with us, watching traffic flow, watching truck flow, watching areas of work, basically with an eye towards seeing it in a new and different way than we, who have been there for however many years. You know, we've always done it this way, we've always parked this way, we've always organized the buildings this way. Basically, those folks with organizational criteria and architectural bent can look at same space and see advantages and opportunities that the users often can't. So at this point, I don't know what in particular any building may end up being. I do know that the building where the sanitation trucks are currently parked is the building that's probably in the worst shape structurally. There's not much to the building, it's a cinder block building with steel supports and a wood roof, and it was built by employees 20, 30 years ago. So that's a building that largely will, they'll take a hard look at whether or not that building is best demolished and rebuilt, moved and altered. I think one of the things they'll be doing is evaluating the flow within the facility itself and how to best use our very small space in terms of maximizing both travel lanes as well as storage. You know, we laid out a pretty broad brush of what we called future needs. Certainly, more covered space and more covered storage was one of the items on the top of that list, as well as several other. that list, as well as several others related to, you know, energy efficiency and impact on the neighborhood.
How well do the trash trucks and recycling trucks fit in their current barns?
They stick out. The structure that was built, was built when there was no such thing as a 32-yard solid waste packer. You know, trucks back then were 15 to 20 yards, so the whole basically front cab of the vehicle sticks out from the bay that they park in.
So it would be fair to say that they probably are gonna have to at least modify, if not replace, those facilities?
Yeah, I would think particularly that space, which is, has some significant structural problems right now.
Right, okay, thank you.
Catherine Robinson.
Thanks for being here, Darrell. I don't have much to ask except kind of a little bit of a follow-up maybe to what Terry asked, and that is, now's the time when you are considering, putting kind of everything on the table as how you'll act in public works, where the place, where the things will be and what they'll... And have you, to what extent do we have a continuing conversation about whether solid waste is a good thing for us to continue doing? Because now would be a time to really think about that. Would we save money just handing it back to the county? And that's, I know that's a big question, but they provide solid waste for the county, for everybody in the county, and we get no reimbursement for it or very little. What if we gave it up?
Well, the evaluation that was done back when the committee was looking at tax duplication and evaluating costs, my recollection, and again, it's been a while, so I don't have the numbers in my head, but that the cost for county collection was more expensive by something like $100 a household than the city's cost for collection.
They slap a fee on it, wouldn't they?
Yeah, the county does have a base systems benefits charge as well as a refuse collection fee that's reflected on taxpayers' bills, not as a tax, but as a fee identified for sure.
So I guess in that respect, it's not a tax duplication issue, it's a, they're not charging us the fee, and so in a sense, they're giving us a benefit by not charging us the fee.
Yeah, now 15 and 20 years ago, when the county didn't have a recycling program at all, for starters, and then when we had a much more aggressive recycling program than they did, the benefits to maintaining the city collection were fairly obvious to folks. Now that our programs are pretty synonymous, in fact, we use the county facility for recycling process. There are a few things we do, though it's getting less and less now, that differentiates what we can offer in the city residents that the county doesn't offer, and we are trying to do collaborative and cooperative programs with them, like having the compost bins available from the county now at the public works facility, and publicizing, let folks know about the hazardous waste drop-offs that the county does. So there are less differences between the programs now than there were even 10 years ago.
And this came up earlier tonight, but I know that you have some good thoughts on it too, and that's the municipalization of energy production, or energy wholesaling, I guess it is, buying it in bulk and then having our own residents purchase it through us. And the, I was told, I think Councilmember Wright said today, is it Councilmember Wright about the state law having to change in order for that to come to pass? I know before there was talk about the Public Service Commission being the roadblock, but what do you see as the roadblock in that right now?
Well, in a practical sense, one of the issues and roadblocks certainly is information and understanding of the depth and the type of program that would need to exist. I believe that the state has passed legislation that would allow municipalities the opportunity to do that, that they'd have to make a ruling or get a ruling from the PSC that they were doing it because the residents could not get that service competitively from the existing utility companies, and whether or not that case could be made would be something that lawyers would need to weigh in on. But one of the biggest issues, and it's kind of a continuing theme, and I will raise it again a little later, and just in general, about our role in expanding our environmental and sustainability efforts, is without additional staffing, without additional folks that can develop the program, evaluate what's going on around the country, we're pretty maxed out with what we're currently doing on behalf of the city and the city's residents within our program itself and the existing staff. So in order to champion a new program like that requires outside expertise as well as administrative and other kinds of time internally that we just don't have available in terms of a body to take that on.
And now we've used volunteers effectively in the last committee that was studying this, had some stellar type folks on it, so of course, if we were gonna pursue trying to municipalize, is that, am I using the right word? Municipalize, to turn it into a verb, energy, I remember it was, there was a lot of good ideas that came out of that committee, so, but I would love to see you say, well, how much, what are the costs and benefits of pursuing that avenue? In other words, how much would it cost us to do the research and find, and man the, or, you know, provide those services, and then how much could we, would it be a wise investment if it would serve our residents? If, even if our residents got just a minor cut in their electrical bill, but the city was able to provide that service and bring more revenues in, we're, I mean, we're a city with very few revenue streams, so I know there's been concern on the council that if we were able to provide energy through the city mechanism of some sort, that it shouldn't be put into the public coffers, into the general fund or whatever. I don't agree with that. I think that if we can provide services to the public in an entrepreneurial type of fashion, that we ought to use it as an income stream. So I'd appreciate some kind of cost benefit as to what it would take to get, first of all, to the decision point, and then as best you can, beyond the decision point, to what if it was actually working? What if we were actually, if we had an opt-out system where people were automatically gonna get their energy through us unless they opted out? And for the number of households and the amount of energy that was consumed in the city, and the various kinds of margins that we could achieve, how much income could we generate?
We could take a look at, one of the challenges, of course, is there's very few people actually doing that in an area similar to ours with our existing state of state regulations and competitive or non-competitiveness within the utility providers themselves. So it's always a little hard to find a comparable model that we can take a look at. Basically, what you'd be looking at is creating an energy office, per se, as a starting point, which would have some significant costs related to legal and technical expertise that would just be an absolute necessity in order to even enter into any discussions. It's an interesting idea, you know, there are some potential ideas for ways to start it, not on a broad scale, but to get our toe in the water, so to speak, and I see streetlights as a place where, you know, there's some obvious statewide interest, there's certainly a system that we know exactly what our costs are in terms of what we're paying the utility company to maintain or not maintain our streetlights, and there's, you know, legal and legislative authority that's available to us, though very few municipalities have stepped in. There's several of us that are on the fray, and council of governments is now trying to convene a streetlight group, but there may be some avenues through that where we can share a bit of the education in getting up to speed in a way that's potentially doable with the existing staffing we have now. I mean, right now, to get an answer to your question, I wouldn't even know where to start, because I don't know what I don't know, and it's such a new one.
My sense on the municipal aggregation in general was that the statewide effort to change that a couple of years ago through MML priority, my recollection is that it was not as successful as the sense that I was getting from your comments would have led me to believe. So I'm not sure whether it would have to go back to that, you know, kind of getting action out of the state legislature before we could begin to proceed down a road that we might want to pursue. So in looking at where that is, probably the place to talk to is the MML offices and see what their take is on that. Anything else?
No, I guess just a final point on that is, the idea of aggregating with other municipalities makes certain conceptual sense, and there are certainly other municipalities within our two counties of Montgomery and Prince George's, so if we could band together and create an energy authority, that's another way to look at it.
Other questions or comments? Catherine Robinson.
I had a couple of questions. One, I wanted to know what the solid waste tipping fees are.
That's what we pay the county for the per-ton cost of taking our trash to their facility.
Per-ton charge at the dump.
At the incinerator.
Yeah.
Or, we're not actually going to the incinerator, we're at the transfer station where it gets shipped to the incinerator.
Right, and were you looking at one point and seeing if we might use some other, some other place in the county, maybe Prince George's County instead or something like that?
Not for the refuse, but for the recycling processing. Currently, we share our recycling around to the degree that it is in the best interest of the city. We use the county's processing facility, we use a private processing facility located in Rockville, and we've been talking to waste management about using their processing facility in Prince George's County. One of the cornerstones of that will be when our new truck arrives, which hopefully will be in about three to four weeks. And the new truck is a larger truck that will require consolidated collection and won't have the ability to segregate and separate the different items, and will be required to use a single-stream processing facility when we bring that truck onboard, and so...
And that means, when you say single-stream, that means everything goes into one?
Everything goes together. Now, that solid waste tipping fee is just the trash, it doesn't reflect the cost for recycling. I don't know if we've, I guess we didn't spell out in the cost, recycling cost. One of the things that you will see increase this year related to recycling is additional costs for bringing our electronics recycling program from a once-a-year annual event to drop off at the public works facility and the processing capability that we need to pay a contractor to take those materials once we collect them.
And what is that? That is something I noticed and was curious about the cost, because I'm curious about the cost and also how much people are actually using it, because...
It's been enormously popular.
It has, good, because I've gotten lots of questions about it, and I keep telling people, and the question keeps coming, where do I take the stuff in the county? And I feel like, are we really getting through to people about the fact that they can just come up to us and we go and...
It's been a bit of a mixed bag. We have been overwhelmed from time to time. Basically, we have a processor that we're working with that when we get five Gaylord boxes, which are these four-by-four or five-by-five boxes full of electronics, they'll come and pick us up, and they charge us $20 a pound to process and recycle and strip and whatever they do to those items at their facility. We have had a number of computer companies, both inside and outside the city, come up with, you know, pickup truck load full of materials, and we've turned them away and say, you really gotta go to Montgomery County, where we're not really set up for taking, you know, 45 CPUs and 27 monitors. And we've had truckloads of those come, so we're basically trying to gear it towards the individual family, you know, household that, you know, kind of an at-home thing, not a business. But a day doesn't go by where probably half a dozen to two dozen items get dropped at public works. It's been very well-used.
And if you're a resident and you go to the county, do you pay for that separately?
No, no, we're not charging either at this point.
But the county isn't reimbursing us for that fee, that service? Okay. So the single streams, so what does it cost us to do the, how much are we spending on that?
I believe the cost is estimated to be about $30,000 a year for recycling processing.
For just the electronics recycling?
Right, right. It could range depending on the amount of participation. We have applied for a grant from MDE, they do have electronics recycling grants, we haven't heard yet whether or not we've received that, but we're hoping that we get some assistance from the state to cover a portion of the cost.
The $500,000 that we commit to road maintenance or rebating, are we planning on, do we have that indexed to inflation so that it'll go up over time?
My recollection is it hasn't been, but...
And then, I guess this is more for the city manager just in general, I find it hard to figure out what's covered by what we're using general funds to pay for versus what's rebated, because again, if you, at the global level in public works, it's very clear where the revenue comes from, but then when you break down into each area, you can't really tell. You could make some assumptions, like I assume, like, I can assume that we're not getting rebated from the county for the urban forest positions or the city gardener positions.
The only rebate we get that's tied to public works would be for road maintenance. It's a pretty complicated formula, there's a number of components that go into that. I can certainly try to share some of the information from the task force if that would be helpful.
But in subtotal, we're getting a million dollars, right? In total of, I know not just rebates, but I guess that includes highway user fees and...
Yeah, if you actually, if you go to the public works cabin, your budget binder, there's a breakdown of all the revenues that add up to that amount.
Right. So I guess it's just a little bit hard to tell. I guess I could try and go with the waste collection charges, and so you're saying the annual road maintenance only goes to...
It would essentially...
The right-of-way budget?
There would be some right-of-way budget, and I guess arguably you could apply it to some of the capital cost of restoration.
And then just to clarify, if you live in the county, you'd be paying the disposal fee to the county, which is a fee, not tax, it's not a tax, so you can't write it off in your annual taxes, also correct?
That's correct.
And so if we, if we decided we were gonna give that back to the county, we could, we would no longer incur the solid waste costs, but people would be paying that fee instead. And the last time when we had, we looked at it at TASD, it looked like it was actually break-even, or people were paying less under our setup. But I think it is, I think, I know it sounds like a lot of work, but I think Councilmember Siemens makes a good point, if we're about to spend a bunch of money to redo the public works facility and a piece of that is waste management, I think we should look at whether, you know, we continue to do that in particular because people don't really see any difference between what we're, you know, some of this is a public perception issue, I think. People don't really see any difference from what we do in waste management versus what the county's doing, and they perceive this as some, you know, the taxes being higher as a result, when in reality, they may not be. So it's either a public education piece that we need to do, or we should give it back to the county and say, no, you're no longer being charged in your taxes, and your taxes are going down this amount, and you're dealing with the county now, they may be charging a fee, but that's the county.
And don't call us.
Yeah, then there'll be a big clamoring for us to take it over so they can get it up from underneath that fee.
Right. Let me just check to make sure I don't have any other. I guess the last question is, you know, if we, again, to something Councilmember Robinson asked before, if we said we needed to cut, you know, here, you know, we could do away with the recycling, I guess that's the electronics recycling, that $30,000, but what else does it mean if we cut the public works budget? Like, what do we lose on the service side? What are the choices?
I was just gonna say, given the percentage of our budget that's allocated to personnel and the significant other amounts of the budget that's actually allocated towards expenses and other departments, you can't trim too much without then deciding to eliminate a service. Some of the programs we threw on the table is, you know, re-looking at the way we do leaf collection. There's a large cost associated with that type of program, eliminating some components of our recycling program. But basically, there is no reduction in our budget without a concurrent reduction in some level of service, be that we reduce our use of temporary labor and thereby extend our mowing site... our mowing cycle from a two-week rotation to a four-week rotation. You know, every dollar you cut is going to equate to a service level.
But for example, with leaf, you could do away with vacuum and require everyone to put it in bags and save money as a result of that.
Or reduce the frequency. Instead of a seven-week program, you get one shot, one pickup, you know, and then the rest is handled otherwise.
And are, where do the field maintenance items reside?
In the right-of-way division.
They're in the right-of-way division.
In terms of mowing and...
But that includes maintenance on parks and stuff like that?
Street signs, minor road maintenance, painting, playground maintenance, all those things.
But that also includes repaving?
A large part, I mean, the repave program is largely the capital budget and the money we spend on street restoration. We do do some minor pavement, pothole repair, some permanent patching, some crack filling in the Public Works budget, but the bulk of what people think of as street restoration is in the capital budget.
So I'm just playing a little devil's advocate here. Why don't we just tell the county we're giving them back the streets, right? You have the responsibility for paving the streets and maintaining the streets. And, you know, we complain when streets aren't particularly paved. And if there's a street we really find is deplorable, why don't we just pay money to have that single street repaved? Why couldn't we go about doing it that way?
I think this is the legal question the council has never really directed that you wanted answered, which is technically the city owns the street. So the process of abandoning something that you own, I think, is a question for the city attorney's office, quite frankly. We had some very cursory discussions, she and I, about this during the task force. But I think if that's something the council wants legally researched, we can certainly do that. I think the thing about a street or a bridge, which technically the city owns and has responsibility for, is a much different service delivery question than choosing not to have your own police department. That's clearly something that the county can provide, but when you're talking about essentially abandonment of publicly-owned property or a transfer to an entity that may or may not want it, I think that's starting to need some legal guidance. Certainly, we can pursue that.
I agree. I think it would be interesting if the legal guidance said that we couldn't abandon the streets, we couldn't give them back to the county. I think we'd actually have a strong legal case to oppose on legal grounds the tax duplication setup because the premise of it is sort of that you, if you want to pay more, you can so you can take on the service yourself. But in that case, we would, we don't even have the option of giving it back to them. So we're stuck with paying to do it and not getting reimbursed at a level that is fair, right? Because the default and all the other setups is, hey, if you don't like it, you can give it back to us and we'll do it and you'll get the level of service that we provide. But if we can't even do that with the streets, then it seems like we have a grounds to question legally that rebate structure.
Yeah, I try not to practice law without a license. I think that the complicating factor, I think, once you start getting into tax duplication as well, and certainly something Councilmember Robinson is probably painfully familiar with, is this whole issue of what does state law require, what does county law require? And clearly, the county law is more expansive than state law. There's nothing to say the county couldn't turn around and change its law, quite frankly. So I think there's a whole lot of, I think, overlapping layers to this issue. I think if it's certainly something the council wants reviewed, then certainly we'd be happy to do that if that's what a majority of the council wants.
And I don't want to prolong that discussion, but I'd just add that I know that the general abandonment procedure of like a public right-of-way that isn't paved and therefore you're going to abandon it, it has to go to the adjacent, be split among the adjacent property owners. And so if somebody were to make the argument that we couldn't give them up and therefore we abandoned them, they would essentially become private roads.
See, council members do not have that restriction that you place on yourself.
I don't know. I would make a motion that we instruct the city attorney to figure out whether we can, you know, what our rights are on giving the roads back to the county.
And I would say that maybe we shouldn't decide that this evening, especially since three of us are not here. But I think that's something we could discuss further.
I was thinking if four of us wanted to do that, then we have majority. But if you feel like you don't...
I agree with you, Councilmember Wright, but I do think it would be valuable to hear the other council members' opinions before we vote on it.
So we ready to, do we need anything else for Public Works in terms of direction before we go to Stormwater?
Well, one thing I wanted to ask the city clerk is, we had prepared some supplemental information highlighting some of the capital projects, and I don't see that at the place at the dais.
It's in the...
I was like looking for my orange sheet and trying to be surreptitious and didn't see it. I think one of the things I would suggest to council, and this is just sort of a, thank you, Darryl, just kind of a highlight, as you can certainly flip to the capital, the CIP in your budget, but most of the items that are included in the capital improvement program for Public Works are simple replacement of equipment that are scheduled and included in the equipment replacement reserve. I did want to make sure that while Darryl is here, that if there's any other ones that you may want to talk about, I've tried, on this sheet, tried to pull out probably the more significant items that are not coming out of the equipment replacement reserve. And one would certainly be the Public Works facility that I think the council has talked about quite a bit, basically last week and a little bit this evening. The two bridges that require repair, we talked about a little bit earlier, just in the sense that the county isn't interested in sharing its stimulus funding with us. I did want to just highlight for the council, this was in the transmittal message, but what is included in the proposed budget assumes that we do have a cost-sharing arrangement with the county for these two bridges. I think you may recall that Councilmember Urban and Councilmember Elrich had sent a letter to their council colleagues at the county, essentially supporting kind of a 50-50 cost-share arrangement, kind of took an somewhat optimistic approach in the budget and assumed that that would get through the county council. That remains yet to be seen. So I did just want to call that out for the council. And I would say this question has come up from individual council members, whether these bridges need to proceed with, you know, with these repairs. And in talking to the city engineer, and Darryl can certainly speak to this if the council would like, we do need to be forward with this. This is not something that we can continue to put off. I think we probably have been putting off the repairs as we tried to work various angles to get some assistance from the county. And I think everyone's painfully aware, we've been unsuccessful in that to date.
So our options, repair the bridges or should close them?
Yeah, let's close them.
Let's close the one where you have to go on Sligo Creek Parkway, the county road.
Close the Carroll Avenue one, too.
That's not ours.
Well, it's not ours, but we have to fix it.
No, no.
No, that was not ours. That was not ours. It's a flower and maple. I mean, I think I would probably want to hear either from Darryl or from the city engineer. I think, you know, the bridges are not unsafe at this time. I want to stress that, but there are certainly some things having to do with the piers and the footers and, you know, if you don't fix those things at a point in time, you find those things eroding and we could find ourselves having to close a bridge.
But closing the bridges is an alternative?
It is an alternative. Obviously, there are, we, our own trucks use those in terms of providing services. There are ambulances going over those bridges since they're obviously near the hospital. And there's consequences to doing that, but that's certainly something we could do.
The level of deterioration in the piers and some of the spalling and scaling underneath the bridge, which would be addressed by the renovation, is such that the bridges are nowhere near hazardous and to be closed. So if you waited till deterioration got to that level where you needed to close the bridge, it would be many, many years down the future, in the future. However, by not addressing maintenance, you'd basically require reconstruction of the bridge rather than repair. You're at a point now where repair is possible, very doable.
But we are seriously, I know we're not getting this stimulus money. There is also the potential of getting federal stimulus money to, which is a longer process, right? Which is to totally rebuild the bridge, not just repair.
There are probably, the stimulus funds have basically been given to the states who have chosen to give them to the county. There is another avenue in terms of, it's significant rehabilitation or reconstruction, which is not this level of funding. It's a far cry from that, which is the federal government for a long time has had programs, rehabilitation programs are basically, I believe it's federal funding's about 50%. And then if you get to a certain level where you're actually talking more reconstruction, it's an 80-20 cost share. But the, I guess, conservative estimates of reconstructing these bridges and what the city's share would be assuming it's the 80-20 is literally in the millions of dollars. And stimulus...
The 80 is ours?
The 80 is the federal government if it qualifies.
Our 20% is in the millions.
Right. The stimulus programs, at least as they stand right now, do not allow any stimulus funds to be used where the local governments share, whether that's the 20 or the 50. So the city would have to...
And the timeframe on this is that it wouldn't qualify for stimulus funding anyway because it's too far out?
Correct.
For the long-range, bigger dollar.
Normally, again, I've worked at some cities that have used federal funding for bridges and normally those cycles are years out. And once again, I think we're talking about $335,000 worth of repairs, as Darryl has outlined. It would not qualify for the federal bridge programs as they exist.
And we could also explore the option of giving the bridges back to the county, which might be different than giving all of the roads back to the county, correct?
Once again, not being a lawyer, I would say the issues are probably the same because it has to do with the ownership of those. And technically, we are the owners of the bridges, just like we are of the roads.
Plus, the county can't put these bridges into their CIP because they're unwilling to make CIP investments in bridges that they don't own. That's what we heard when, I think, isn't that what we've heard, Bruce?
Quite frankly, I've heard every argument that could possibly be made by the county to refuse to provide assistance to these bridges. They at one time had encouraged me through the task force to basically seek the county executive's approval when the mayor sent several letters to get those into the CIP.
To which I got no response.
First one, he didn't get a response. Second was a no. They had had discussions about having grant programs to municipalities. You know, I think at this juncture, I would say if the county's going to provide any more significant assistance for reconstruction of a bridge, it would probably be, require exploring whether or not the city could just abandon them because I'm not seeing much other hope.
Could you remind me again what is the experience of other municipalities in Montgomery County?
I think to date, I don't believe they, with what the county has indicated, and we haven't found any evidence to the contrary, is that the county has never participated in a municipal bridge project.
So the municipalities are budgeting for their own repair of their own bridges within their...
I don't think you can say that.
I would say bridges typically have such a long life that, I mean, I can tell you even on the task force, this was an issue that I was pretty much carrying. I think the other municipalities, you know, who were represented on the task force said, "Sure, Barb, if you want to push this, we'll support you." But they didn't have any immediate issues on the horizon, didn't seem really interested in it, which I found kind of amazing because if you look at Rockville and Gaithersburg, I mean, they have, their number of bridges are in the double digits. And it is an issue that if I were a Gaithersburg official or a Rockville official, I would be concerned about.
Because there may be a little bit newer municipalities, they're not facing that for years to come.
And they've actually got some pretty old bridges, though. And like I say, if you've got 15 or 20 of them in your town, I'd be a little concerned.
I would just like to see if there was a precedent set that the county did pay for other bridges in other municipalities.
Councilmember Urban, I think, working on behalf of the city specifically asked that question of the county department of transportation. The answer was no, and I've not found any evidence to, you know, to the contrary. So at this point, I'm not finding any evidence of that.
Thank you.
So I just want to make sure I understand that when we talk about repaving, that's actually in the capital budget, that's not part of the right-of-way maintenance budget?
Right, right. Major street restoration.
Yeah. And just want to call attention to Baltimore Avenue and hoping that in that capital budget, we still planning on...
From Albany to Tacoma. It's in some, it's in some document somewhere.
Yeah.
I've lost track, but the streets that we'll be doing with the funding in FYO10 includes Westmoreland Avenue from Carroll to Walnut, Baltimore Avenue, the last block from Albany to Tacoma, and then I believe to the Wildwater Jackson Avenue in Orange Six, a portion from Carroll to Anne.
Yeah, Darryl, you mentioned the streets basically in the document supplemental. The only other thing, just from the capital side, this was a project that actually had originally been in the FYO9 approved budget or as originally adopted, was the asphalt miller and paver. The council spent some time talking about that last year and we sensed was that it was a good investment in terms of our ability to maintain streets. As you may recall, when we needed to do some work on the HVAC system in this building because of the significant cost of that, which I believe, Darryl, was about $113,000, we made the decision to try to keep expenditures constant within the current year budget and just essentially switched out the asphalt miller paver for the HVAC system. Darryl, is anything else in capital? Those seem to be the most significant things, but...
Yeah, those are certainly the largest, most of what else you see here is on these spreadsheets. Those items that relate to Public Works, relate to equipment. Certainly, the asphalt miller and paver is the most expensive beyond that. One of our leaf collection vacuums, which is a standard thing we replace after every 10 years. A riding mower, where we're looking at the alternative for alternative fuels for that riding mower. Some vehicle maintenance equipment, a truck tire changer and a brake lathe. And of course, the streetlight upgrade, which is a standard kind of rolling fund that we use for anytime residents make a request to add or brighten the streetlights on their street. That $20,000 item is what's used to fund that. The money we have for street rehabilitation, we've already discussed the issue with the bridges. And then the other items you see relate to the Public Works renovation, both the design and the start of the construction.
Okay, we're ready to go to Stormwater.
And as you know, the Stormwater Fund is a standalone fund that receives money from Stormwater utility fees paid by all property owners in the city. And then the funds for half of the city engineer, as well as a quarter of an administrative staff person, are charged as the personnel aspect of that, those costs, as well as capital costs for new systems and subcontract costs for renovation and repair of existing system, as well as our TV inspection and water quality test. And the city TV inspects a third of the Stormwater system annually so that within a three-year period, we're having the internal view of all our Stormwater structures to identify defects, defaults, or problems. And then we do, as part of our MPDES permit, we are testing our dry weather outfalls where there is water present, basically to try to establish a baseline. Last year was the first year we did testing, so we'll be doing testing annually to see the level of pollutants in those Stormwater systems. The projects that we're looking at for FYO10 specifically related to Stormwater, and again, I'll say these are those that are planned. Occasionally, we'll have a catastrophic failure of a pipe that'll take precedence, so hopefully that doesn't occur. But these are what's currently looked ahead. We're going to be doing some repairs to the existing Stormwater inlet at Birch Avenue and Dogwood Avenue. It's a very shallow inlet that needs to be deepened. The city engineer's been looking at ways to use some innovative filtration components in that inlet, and that will be the first one that we've done of that type on a city street. Our other filtration have been within the Stormwater system of the Public Works facility itself and some other areas. Also repairing the inlet, there's a whole system of things that need to be repaired on Glengarry Avenue and Sligo Creek Parkway. on Glengarry Avenue and Sligo Creek Parkway. There's an eroding slope. There's a failing inlet, and there's a collapsing outfall. So there's three different components within 30, 40 feet of each other that will all be addressed through that program. And there's a, we're also aware of a problem, though the full extent of it is not yet, not yet known. If you've ever driven down New Hampshire Avenue near Larch Avenue in a heavy rainstorm, you see gushing water out onto New Hampshire Avenue as a result of, of a broken pipe, eroding pipe. There's some system problems that, in the area of Larch and New Hampshire Avenue. So those are, are the planned repairs. The new systems that we're hoping to install that would be part of the Stormwater capital budget is to address a significant erosion problem that's been brought to our attention at Hancock Avenue and Sheridan Avenue. We'll again be hoping to employ innovative low-impact design, infiltration, and slope stabilization. Taking a look at the establishment of some type of rain garden or, or other system at the Prince George's Avenue Triangle, which is sort of a green space where we've done some tree planting. It's just a wide triangle median in the middle of Prince George's Avenue, near New Hampshire Avenue. And also continuing to work on the water filtration system at the exterior of our facility, basically the dead end of Oswego Avenue, right as the slopes head into Tacoma Piney Branch Park, taking a look at a sediment and filtration system for the end of that street. So those are the major capital projects that we're hoping to, to get underway. And as I said before, in addition to that, we'll do the testing, the TV inspection, and a lot of the routine maintenance, inlet repairs, cleaning that go along with keeping this program up and running. Oh, and I forgot, we've got a program with Friends of Sligo Creek where we'll be facilitating their installation of rain gardens through a small contribution on the part of the city for soil, mulch, and the purchase and delivering of plants when they're ready to go for their rain gardens.
Sounds like at least one person has a question. Councilmember Simmons?
Sounded like that was the limit he was setting. My, my question is, if you are coordinating the design of the facility at the end of Geneva Avenue with your planned renovation of the public works facility?
The end of Geneva Avenue?
Is that...
Oswego.
Oswego, I mean.
Yeah, it will be the exterior area around where our leaf mulch facility is now. We certainly can share, share information as it gets developed with the Ritchie Avenue Citizens Association. But it won't be anything that impacts anything beyond the exterior of our facility itself.
Okay, but if there's some redesign of your facility, might that impact what you need?
The redesign of the facility is separate from the issue that I raised here related to the Stormwater filtration at the end of Oswego Avenue. I'm imagining there'll be numerous public interfaces related to the public works facility renovation, first as a component of the park and planning mandatory referral, as well as just general communication as we, as we go forward and develop the program. I anticipate that we're going to get from the architects a, a plan that will require the council to direct and determine based on their advice and our reaction to it, what phases and what steps we want to take first with the facility, because I'm sure that, I'm assuming that the number of things that could be done at that facility will exceed the budget that we've got planned for that.
Thank you.
Any other questions, any other issues that we need to give direction on, or any requests for further information? Thank you very much, Darryl. We're adjourned.